Everyone. Mr. Summers, would you give us a report out of the closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met with Mayor Gilman, Mayor Portem Lang, Councilmember Mang, and Councilmember Whitman with Councilmember Rule with an excused absence in closed session regarding one item, conference of labor negotiators regarding all unrepresented employees. The council provided direction to staff and council on, including Kathy Holman, our human resources risk manager as the city's negotiator regarding labor negotiations, but took no reportable action. Final compensation action such as approving any change in compensation cannot happen in closed session. No action of that sort was taken, and that if taken will be returning to a future open session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will conclude the closed session, and we will now have our special presentations for Tuesday, August 12th. And Mr. Montgomery, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Portem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
And Councilmember Rule with an excused absence.
Thank you. And would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Welcome, community, honorable counsel. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have an approval of the agenda, please, of the presentation section?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you. Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Now we will move on to our presentations. First, we have Chief Steve Jenkins to provide an introduction to Deputy Eric Burnett, Ojai's motor officer. Hey, Chief.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Coming up.
Perfect. So I got a little PowerPoint put together for you guys. So first off, thank you for this opportunity, honorable mayor, council members, and Mr. City Manager. So I do want to do three things. I kind of want to update you on traffic in Ojai, some of our stats, and then a campaign strategy that we have, and then also introduce you to the new motor officer. So first off, we get right into the stats. 2024, we had seventy-seven collisions in the city, thirty-one of them injury collisions. So that's a forty percent. That's, you know, a pretty significant number. We did have one fatal as a bicyclist, and the vehicle was deemed to be traveling at unsafe speed. We had four involving pedestrians on foot, and then twelve involving bicyclists. So that's sixteen percent. That's a pretty significant number, too. Twenty twenty-five, we're really not seeing a difference so far. This was from January 1st to July 31st. And so we saw actually a little bit of an uptick in collision. So we're going to be monitoring that. Main causes of our collisions, you know, we have our pedestrians, bicyclists right away. You know, that's, you know, the crosswalks, or, you know, there's collisions going on, mostly on Ojai Avenue. And I'll show you a map in a little bit and kind of go into some of that stuff. But and then the second largest main cause is unsafe speed. And then, of course, we have our improper passing and turning. This is like cars turning onto Ojai Avenue, you know, so there's collisions happening. And then we got, believe it or not, wrong road, wrong side of the road drivers. And then we got DUIs. One DUI was two in the afternoon, so interesting. And then disobeying signals, like stop signs, different things. And then definitely, it's not tracked as well because we have other primary collision factors, but distracted driving, a cellphone in hand, and, you know, eating or doing all sorts of stuff with your hands while you're driving. I kind of want to focus a little bit on this map, so if you can kind of get oriented. But you see the Y down at the left there. There is this, there's four significant areas that I kind of, we want to focus on. One is the Y. It kind of makes sense, right? People are coming in and out of the grocery shopping area. They're making that turn. You know, people probably driving, driving too fast, and then there's collisions there. So that makes sense. But then I would do, the second area I want to point out is Ojai Avenue. Do you see all the collisions on Ojai Avenue? That is definitely a, kind of an area we want to focus on. And a lot of that is, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists. It could be the improper turning, unsafe speed. There's all sorts of reasons for Ojai Avenue, why we're having those numbers, but that is going to be a focal point. Some of it is, you know, when you're, an unsafe speed, just because it says twenty-five miles an hour, just as long as everyone understands that, it doesn't mean that's the safe speed, you know, so you go off visibility. So if the sun's in your eyes, you're supposed to slow down. If there's lots of pedestrians, bicyclists, it's a really, you know, busy day or evening, you're supposed to slow down. There's lots of car traffic, you're supposed to slow down, you know, so there's lots of reasons. Lighting at night, you're supposed to slide, slow down because there's, you know, limited lighting. So so keep that in mind, that your safe, your safe speed is based on your base of visibility. Another area of focus, we're going to be on Grand Avenue. That's where a fatal was. The stop signs, even though they're great to kind of slow, you know, people down, they do create this kind of safe sense of safety for pedestrians. You know, so they think it's safe to cross, and but people are blowing through stop signs or not taking that as a safe speed. So that could cause some issues. So that's going to be a focal point. People need to obey the stop signs. And then definitely around the arcade area, you can see that there's lots of collisions there. That makes sense. Again, coming in and out of a shopping center, lots of turns on the roads, or people already driving. Any questions on this map? What's the goal? Reduce traffic collisions, target complaint locations, change behavior, and make Ojai roads safer. What's our traffic safety campaign? Just be a good neighbor. Drive safer, right? So that Ojai's small, Ojai's unique, it's a sense of community here. So you drive safe because it's good for your neighbor, it's good for your neighbor's kids. So that's what we're trying to get the community to buy in on. Drive safe because it's, it's your people here, right? That you want to keep safe on the road, so. This is a flyer that we're handing out. If you scan the QR code, it goes to a video, about a one-minute video on traffic safety here in the Ojai Valley. So if you have time, you can do that. We handed that flyer out. The back of the flyer goes over some most common traffic violations that we're seeing in Ojai. So this is unique to Ojai. And then next, I want to introduce the new motor, Deputy Eric Burnett. Please tell the council, mayor, who you are.
Hi, thank you.
Hey.
So I'm very grateful to be selected to be your guys' new motor officer. I thank Chief Jenkins for selecting me. I do come to you with quite a bit of experience. I worked at Santa Paula for fifteen years before making the great decision to come over to the Sheriff's Department about two years ago. But at Santa Paula, I was a motor officer down there. I was in charge of the OTS grant. And I was also an instructor at the, well, I was a teacher at Santa Paula High School. I got my teaching credential and taught the kids. We did a lot of traffic safety things with the kids, bicycle rodeo. So I look forward to bringing that here as well, getting in with the schools, teaching them while they're young, teaching them what the rules of the road are, especially with our e-bikers and making sure they're following those rules. So I do thank you that I got this position, and I've met a few of you out on traffic stops, and you've said hi, so nice to see you again. No, no, I didn't pull over any of them. They actually came over and said hi after. But it's been a nice, fresh breath for me after doing fifteen years in Santa Paula. This is a completely different pace, completely different community, and I'm glad to be up here.
I wanted to ask a question. I did see a comment today that the e-bikers are being more respectful because of this increased presence. Is, are you finding that as well, or I would love to hear your experience?
So in my experience, most of the kids in this town are pretty amazing.
Yeah.
When I talk to them, they're really respectful. Yes, sir, thank you. I talk to their parents majority of the time. I'll have them call them, explain what's going on, so everyone's on the same page. I leave it on speakerphone so they, everyone can hear each other. So it's been a great tool for me to talk to the parents and talk to them. There's a couple knuckleheads. I think everywhere has a couple knuckleheads. Those kids, obviously, the enforcement will be more severe citations. And ultimately, if their bike gets taken, their bike gets taken. But I would say the majority of the kids that I've talked to, they're starting to buckle out their helmets. They're staying off the busier streets. They're doing more, things more respectfully. So I've had a lot of luck with it, it seems like, so far. I haven't had a lot of repeat offenders, so.
Thank you.
It's been good for me.
Yeah. Related, how often are the officers on their e-bikes? So not the, not on the motorcycle, but how often are they, and where are they going?
So I'm trying to get them more and more on the e-bikes. So right, right now, it's just limited to, you know, I'm kind of giving them the leeway, like, hey, if you want to go in and just hop on the bike for a couple hours, you want to come in on overtime, if you want to, you know. So right now, I'm not really pushing it, but I'm encouraging them, like, hey. But soon, we're going to be putting out some overtime and expecting them to get out. So it's a few times a week right now, but I want more. I want more. We've gotten a very positive response on the deputies being on our own e-bikes.
Yes.
Myself, I've been out there. You see me out there, and people are waving, and they're happy, and I'm like, wow, this is great. No one waves at me when I'm, when I'm in my, you know, patrol car, like, this is great.
You were in the park a week ago Monday, on your bike. Thank you.
I will tell you, on the e-bike front, you know, we are, that's one of our, you know, top issues that we're going to try to, you know, and you've seen it. I mean, hopefully, you've seen the enforcement part of it. But again, we are taking that educational approach. The goal is to, when we stop for e-bikers, you know, their bikes are illegal, or they should be licensed, or there's issues, we're calling the parents, notifying the parents, that's step one. And then we're telling the parents, say, if we see this again, then your kid's going to be cited. And, you know, we're going to continue on. So we've gotten some good feedback on that.
Okay.
And so far, the parents have been respectful. I will tell you, though, the best way to try to get out of a ticket is to be nice. Just be nice, because I'm telling you, if you're not nice, you're talking yourself into a ticket. And then last thing I'll say, you know, being a manager, I do do random audits of body camera footage, you know, because we turn on the body camera every time we do a stop. I can tell you, we picked the right guy.
Okay.
I can't tell you how many times I've seen video, and he's just sitting there, and he's just conversing with the person. The person's being nice, he's being nice, he's, you know, I mean, one, one contact, it was about five minutes. He sat there for five minutes, just talking to her, you know, explaining, hey, why we need you to drive safer and slow down, and this, then. And by the end of it, she's thanking him, you know, and it was a positive contact. And that's what I want initially. If I see, as long as I see behavior changing and people driving safer, then we're good. Again, I will stress, though, if I don't see change in, like, traffic collisions, or I don't see the change of behavior, we are going to ramp up enforcement, and citations will be coming. So it's, but I'm going off everyone here. So if everyone wants to slow down, obey the laws, we'll stay in kind of education mode.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So are we doing random times and, like, times of day, days of the week, and things like that?
Yeah, so my directive has been, I need to touch weekends, so I do work every other weekend. I come in, depending on what's going on with my personal life and work week, I do alter it a little bit. So it's kind of nice because no one knows when I'm actually going to be here. So but during the week is the majority of our traffic collisions, if you look at the data, is late afternoon. Tuesday through Saturday is really the bulk of our traffic collisions. So that's the time I focus on the most. That's when I try to be out there and be active and issuing citations, or talking to them. So those are my hours, but then also the OTS grant that we're able to come in and work, like, DUI enforcement. Worked a couple of those. I'll come in later, stay till one, two o'clock in the morning to do DUI enforcement, and that's paid for by the OTS.
Answer your question. It's going to be very random, but it's good. That's a good thing. And so, I mean, he's going to be out there a lot, so obviously.
More questions? Mr. Harvey, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the outlook that's going to go in everyone's mailbox is going to have the e-bike classifications in the document, correct?
Joint article by the chief of police and the city attorney's office, and it's going to explain the different classifications and some other useful information.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Nice meeting you.
Great job on the cards, too.
Yeah. What we want to do now is open this up to any public comment on that presentation, if there is any. Yes?
I read in the paper that.
Maybe just state your name, just since we don't have a card.
I'm Starchild.
That's okay, thank you.
Yeah, I read in the paper that when neighbors allow other drivers to turn in front of them, that our officer takes enforcement action against them. That seems like an example of being a good neighbor that he's punishing. And I'm wondering why he does that, and if he intends to stop.
I didn't fully understand what you proposed.
Yeah, so if, if somebody's going to turn in front of you, like on Ojai Avenue, and you stop, and you let them turn.
Oh, I see.
Kim Burley Rivers wrote in the paper that he's taking enforcement action against those individuals.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
Okay, so you are correct. He is going to take corrective action on that. I'll tell you why. So the type of action is, this, the vehicle could continue on Ojai Avenue. It's wide open. But the vehicle stopping to allow the neighbor in, that causes issues behind you, either rear ends or different issues coming up. So actually, quite a few of our collisions are related to that. So we, so again, we're, our goal is to reduce collisions, so we are going to enforce. It doesn't seem, it seems kind of weird, right? You're trying to be a good neighbor, let someone in. Now, it's different if it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. People are stopped at the red light, and you allow someone in. That's different. That's okay. We're saying you can't impede traffic and stop traffic to allow someone in, even though that is kind of the Ojai way. I mean, I've seen that a lot, so. But just know, a lot of our collisions are because of that, the rear ending, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
So Brian Akins, just one quick question, since I know we've talked about this. Seems to be that there's been an improvement in the theft of mail in the last, since you last spoke with us. Is there any update that you can provide to the community?
So good news, since we've hardened the mailboxes, I have not seen one crime report come in for, for fraud or, you know, the checks.
Thank you.
And then it helped, I mean, even though I didn't like the high-speed pursuit that night, it helped because that guy has not come back. So, so I think he knows he's on our radar. We do have our specialized, special enforcement unit, still chasing them down and trying to get all the associates down in LA, so that it's not over for them. But it's, it's coming. But I can tell you that the Ojai Valley has been pretty quiet as far as mail theft, so that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Akins. Okay, we will move on to our second presentation, which is the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Kathy Nolan to provide a progress report on the City Hall Campus Master Plan. Thank you. Slide should be coming right up.
Okay, good. Mayor Gilman, council and staff. I'm Kathy Nolan. I'm with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and I'm happy to be here tonight. And I'm actually here to give a progress report on the Ojai City Hall Campus Master Plan, a contract that the Ojai Valley Green Coalition has with the city of Ojai. And I'm just going to give a little background, and then I've got some slides that I'm going to go through. And I do have a few questions, kind of midway or towards the end, where I'm hoping I can get some feedback from council. And then, if not tonight, we have an opportunity on our website where the whole entire community can actually go and provide some comments if they so please. But if you remember, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition had a community service grant at the time. And it was for the first phase of this master planning project, and that was for community engagement. So we had workshops, we had site tours and a survey, and gathered a lot of information. But the outcome from that, from the public, was there was a real desire for a nature-based passive park and a place for education, learning, and coming together, so a hub. Then at the end of twenty twenty-four, we received the contract for this next phase, which includes the master plan, which we are, will have finished by May 31st of twenty twenty-six. But it also included continued stakeholder engagement, so that was with staff, with also some of the projects that have been happening on the Aetica Campus, including the restoration project, the compost project. And we've talked to various other community members who have done a project here and there over the years. In addition, we have been doing site inventory, so we're going out, like, what's here? So it includes everything from, there's two-piece poles to all the trees. We do have that tree survey that I think most of you are aware of, that Jan Skow completed in twenty twenty-three. But what we've done with Jan is, actually, we've been back here at the site numerous times. We put together what I'll call a preliminary Phase One Tree Trimming Tree Removal Plan, and I'm going to be showing you that in a minute. And once again, as preliminary, we'll definitely be meeting with staff to look at that, if there needs to be any adjustments made to it. But the beauty of having that is, too, it aligns with some funding that I'm aware of right now with, for fire suppression. I think the Fire Safety Council actually mentioned this property as one of their potential project sites. So what we're doing actually supports that. So I think that's a good thing. I mentioned the inventory site analysis, which is kind of going into, you know, what are the sun patterns? You know, is it windy? What about parking? Is there enough, et cetera? We're not done with all of that yet, but we're, I'm, we're probably at least halfway or more through with that. But what that has allowed us to do, by getting all that information, not only from the community, but what's on site, it's revealed where we potentially can do something as far as developing the park. And so I think what I'll do now is just go into the slides. Let's see how it works. Oh, good. So this is a sample of our site analysis. We had many more sheets, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing. And I'm just going to point out a couple things. I'll start, like, say, at the bottom-left corner. There's a post-it there, and it says, "Private property encroachment on city property." So in other words, one of the neighbors up there has developed part of the city property. Now, what I don't know is, does that person have an MOU, or did they, we don't know, but we're, I'm hoping we'll find out.
Further research will follow. I'll note, it is not possible to get a prescriptive easement against the city, but obviously, we'll do some further research on that.
Okay, good. Good. And I, I actually submitted a list, and there may be more, but I believe there was the fifteen items, and that was one of them. So these are just areas where we have questions. It's like, okay, what do we do there, right? But then, on that sheet, and I don't need to read every single one, but it was in your packet, there are things about identifying the existing buildings, there's the flood control easement, where the creek is, the old demonstration garden, you know, parking, et cetera. Now, this is a tree study that we've done recently. So all the, all the trees in light green and dark green are the trees that were identified by the arborist, Jan Skow. And then we also worked with our surveyor, just to get the trees in the correct location. We have some more detailed plans, which I'm not showing tonight, but this one actually shows the light green are all the trees that we're proposing to keep. The ones in the darker green are ones that we're proposing to either have trimmed or potentially removed. First of all, because they're hazardous, as it was indicated on Jan Skow's report, and/or they're invasive. Why do we want to get rid of some of the invasives? We're not saying all of them, but a portion or a good portion of them. Number one, we have the restoration project, and a big portion of that project was removing invasive plant species. So if we have some of the same trees on the site and we leave them, we're essentially leaving what I will call the seed inoculum to, you know, cause, you know, further maintenance and what have you. And in addition, many of them are also fire hazards. What we also looked at was, you know, if those trees do in fact come out because they are a safety or hazardous tree or invasive, to the best that we can, of course, the native species would be mitigated, and potentially even the other ones mitigated, because we know we want to do replanting as well. So we're not coming in and just saying, oh, we want to take the trees out. We definitely want to replant when and where we can. So I wanted to emphasize that. And then up at the top, it says, "Existing Tree Canopy Study." Another thing that we've discussed is, you know, what, and this is kind of going back to our site inventory, what's here, what can we keep or have remain on the property? Maybe something needs to be transplanted, or maybe something needs to be reworked, or maybe it needs to just be demoed because it's in such bad shape that it's a hazard or what have you, and it's not worth keeping. I don't need to go into the details on all that right now, but I can. But the point is, what we thought we could even do is, if there's interest from council, when those trees are being removed, and actually, there'd be some pre-planning to this, could we designate trees that could be used for what I would call rustic site furniture, like, say, benches? We are also proposing a lot of nature play areas for young children. So you can have, you know, logs, and you could have rounds to sit on and what have you. Of course, there's mulch, which we all love, and, you know, could use as well. And then even, I have on there Hoagol culture, and if you're not familiar with Hoagol culture, it's a way that you can actually use, say, the tree or the brush waste. You lay it in a swale, like, on a contour, you can add soil and what have you, and use it for, actually, to help with stormwater or water infiltration and to build the soil. So it's a way to use something, or to make, well, what you would call a waste material into a resource. So that's kind of what that study's about. And if, you know, there's interest from the council and the community to do that, we would like to pursue it. I think it kind of makes sense. But, you know, I'm asking.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, good. All right. So the exciting thing was when we, you know, we did all the studies, put all the information together. And then when we started looking at, well, if those trees came out, it opened up and helped us further identify where we might want to do some, I'm going to say development, which sounds, you know, huge and big, but it's not that big. But areas where we could further do something to enhance the park. And I will say, some of our guiding criteria is to, to work with what's already there to the best that we can, to minimize grading, you know, so to work with the existing topography to the best that we can. And then, of course, with the trees, and, you know, the buildings, and we know that some of the buildings are landmarked, and that they're going to stay, and how could we work that, you know, and the pickleball court, the pickleball court's there as well. So the big orange dots basically kind of show the areas that opened up, and you can see there's kind of a pattern there of where we might do, you know, further development. Of course, we've left out the restoration area. You can see the big blue line, looks like a snake, that's the creek. And then the restoration area is on both sides of that. We want to continue to work with preserving and hopefully further enhance the restoration area. And one thing I don't have on here, but I was happy to meet with a couple people today from PAX Environmental, the big, kind of open area, the bottom corner, that, there's a native protected grass species there. It also has a fabulous, fabulous view of the mountains. It's really quite nice. And so the discussion that we had today, and I know, and I've talked with Mr. Harvey about this, is we want people to be able to go up there, but we also want to make sure that it's protected. So if any, and then we also know that we have to work with the flood control easement, and anything we do there, you know, could involve an encroachment permit and or more. But it's just to get all that information together and then kind of come at, well, what are our options? So that's something we're going to be looking at, and it looks like there may be a couple of them, and I'm excited about that. And then, these are the questions that I have, and I'm going to jump, after I mention the questions, into these two slides. So I have two schematic drawings coming up, or bubble diagrams, if you will. And the two big, the big questions are, where would the workshop building, we're calling it the Garden House on our plans, just for fun. You know, we've got the Oak Tree House and Little House, and we've been just kind of doing that, but not that it's, has to remain with that name. But where would those, that building go? And potentially, it could be the use, these are the uses that came up in our workshops, like a community kitchen, a place for indoor workshops, films, lectures. a place for indoor workshops, films, lectures, library, a lab. So where would that be and how big should it be? And if you're still interested, I know people have in sustainable methods and materials. I wanted to say that, where did I come up with the 1,200 square feet that I have on there? I, I just did a takeoff on Kent Hall here in my CAD program and it was like a little over 1,300 square feet. So I drew in about a 1,200 square feet and did a little research. For how many people it would accommodate and you can kind of get an idea based on how many people are in here and what kind of events could happen. The other one is the carriage house, which is a landmarked structure. But the big question with that is we, before we do anything further, we need to have like a structural engineer come in, totally assess it, you know? Is it, can we do anything? It'd be great if we can, but to find that out and then that will help us move forward. And, you know, I'd love to have your input on that. Some of the things that came up in the workshops would be a great place to do like a children's nature center, potentially even like our classes, a library of things, for example. The other item is stormwater capture. We do have an opportunity and I'm going to get to that slide, but I'm just going to mention it right now. And the, we're proposing like rain gardens and bioswales that's catching it in the ground and with plants. But we could also explore storage tanks. And usually, you know, you want to look at your return on investment based on how much water you're going to get and the money you're putting into a tank. But at the same time, we may want to do it as a demonstration for the community because we really want to encourage in our design a fire safe landscape, which we would be emphasizing. And then the last one, I just happened to mention about the tree, reusing the tree parts for new materials. Okay, so now I'm going to try to go through this quickly. I, I brought a little pointer, but I found out it's not going to work. So I'm just going to have to verbally describe this. And I know it looks pretty wild and there's, you know, all these bubbles and what's going on here. But I'm going to stop, start up at the upper left corner. There's the carriage house. And then you're going to see these red bubbles, a series of red bubbles. There are areas that we've identified for kids play that basically in all the bubbles, you'll see these black lines with the arrows. Those are just like paths where things can connect. So there's play areas for kids. There's a red circle with, looks almost like a spider, black line going through it. Those are entry nodes. So those are places where you can ingress, egress, in other words, go in, go out. And we selected those based on what's already here. I will say if you looked on the far right, you're going to see two of those red circles with the spiders, so to speak. That's an area where we identified if needed, that we potentially could add some parking spaces, especially like for ADA and there may be a couple of other ones. That also happens to be the location where delivery trucks can come in for maintenance and contribute to the composting area, which we have kept. There was a composting program there and I did have a nice meeting with David White. We'd like to keep that there. The big gray areas are existing parking. I'm going to start, I'm trying to, I don't want to like jump around too much. But up at the top right, there's a green circle. That's a lawn area that's existing, but we're looking at that as a possible event lawn. There could be a conflict with the pickleball court and sound and we know we have restrictions on the time. So those are things we need to figure out, but we're willing to work with that. The new, we're calling it the garden house for fun, but call it the workshop building or the project building is an orange rectangle and it's kind of in the bottom middle. I don't know if you can see that. So that's, that's one location. Below that is a kind of a view area and that's where the old compost project was, just to give you an idea of where we're at. There's an orchard that's, we're proposing on a sloped area. Why? Because we can actually do that Hoagol culture and capture water that's runoff to help irrigate it to. So, and it's not that steep that you can't work it. We're also proposing a restroom, which is another little orange area. We looked at proximity to Kent Hall. Reason being that we know there are sewer lines on either side of Kent Hall and there's water lines. So once again, trying to work with what's existing. The demonstration garden or the, and the planted areas of the big green circles, you can see the demonstration garden. And I don't want to take too much time, well, I do want to take a lot of time, but I don't have a lot of time. So what I'm going to do is, so this is option A. And I'm going to say this, the, really the main difference between option A and option B is where the project or the work or program building would be. Essentially, the rest of it's very, very similar. So here's, here's another rendition, but very similar. But on this one, actually it looks a little more brown, but it's orange brown. If you go to the kind of middle right, you'll see a rectangle and it says proposed garden house. That's the second location that we're proposing. Once again, we looked at the topography and the tree canopies, so trying to stay out of the canopies. You know, where could we do this? And those are the two locations. This is a circulation plan, just showing, you know, what's connecting, where you, how you'd come in and out. A little bit of information about parking up on the street and existing parking lots. This is very basic, but this is potentially where we could capture runoff water from some of the roofs. We've identified the downspouts, also water coming off the street and the new buildings and the parking lot. I can go, well, I can say next steps, but I'm, I guess maybe now I just open up for questions if you have any. Did you have a question, Matthew?
Actually, not a question. I have a point to note on the agenda if I could, Mayor.
Please.
Yeah.
So as, as folks I think recognize, tonight's a presentation, so the council can't provide direction.
Right.
Or make a decision tonight.
Correct.
But what the council can do, of course, is ask questions, clarifying points. And then as noted, we have a comment period that I think you'll get into on the website.
Yes.
So anybody in the community, including the council, can go and provide comment.
Yes.
And then also recognize the council can set this if through the mayor, a future meeting for a further detailed review, agendized as decision points on these options. But no decision could be made tonight. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Well, I see you have a site cleanup day on October 4th. You've publicized that already or at least, or at least you've communicated that.
Yeah, and I will, I'll, I'll just quickly mention these. So basically, if you do want to make a comment, you go onto the Ojai Valley Green Coalition.org and you go to the volunteer section. Basically, you're volunteering your comments. But there's a place to put your name and all the questions and our staff has done a lovely job on doing that. And we're, we're going to do it till the end of the month. I know it says Tuesday, 8:26, but we're going to go to August 31st. So I encourage everyone to please comment. And then I wanted to say, as Mayor Gilman just pointed out, this is not part of our contract. It's something we, that has emerged in different Green Coalition meetings and get togethers and gatherings. And I've had people come up and mention it to me. You know, people want to get involved with this project. And cleaning up and getting rid of invasive weeds and whatever else we can do is one of the easiest things that we can do and needs to be done, even though I know the crew was just out there and did a beautiful job, but more things are coming up. So basically, we have the first volunteer day, Saturday, October 4th. And we're going to be that, I think you said, I think it is on our website. But we're hoping to schedule another one on the 25th. I just have to get approval from staff. And then we're hoping to do a couple of them in November where we've reached out or in the process of reaching out to a couple, some of the local schools and to the Green Valley Project. So this is a way to get teens, youth involved. And there's a, you know, a small educational portion where, you know, we'll tell them about the restoration, a little education about what we're taking out and not taking out. But it's a way to, to keep the campus, first of all, fire safe, kind of weed safe and just moving forward in a different way. So I just wanted to show that. Also on October 25th, we're going to have an open house and we're going to have it in the conference room. I know it, we're going to take the chairs out, but we're going to leave the tables in there. But what we're going to have is we're going to be moving forward with our design once we get, get this feedback over the next couple of weeks. And then we're going to be creating a concept drawing. So it's kind of like the next step with more information. And it'll be open to, to everyone, council and the public can actually come and make comments. And then I'm looking at doing a couple more site tours. A lot of people don't even know this is back here. And it's a jewel, you know, as it is, it's a jewel, but it'll even be more polished when we get done. So we wanted to do that. And then on, excuse me, October 28th, I'll just do, I won't do a full presentation, but I'll give you a report and update about where we're at. And I'm open for any questions, but of course, any of you can contact me at any time as well.
Please.
Well, I don't really have a question so much as I just have a comment.
Sure.
I, you know, I attended one of the workshops and, and I just think the way that you all have garnered community support and, you know, been very creative in how you, how you got that support and got feedback from the community. I, I just love the approach that you've taken and thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this. It's, it's exciting to see it move forward.
Thank you.
I want to echo that and say, I can't wait for this to start to be worked on.
Yeah. Well, we'll start pulling weeds first.
Pulling weeds is great.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we'll open it up to public comment on that presentation. If anybody has anything they would like to say. And please tell us who you are.
I'm Karen Quimby. Thank you. Ojai resident. Thanks to the Green Coalition and Kathy Nolan's leadership and before her Betsy Van Light's leadership and doing a years-long community engagement process to, to imagine Ojai's newest park. It's amazing. Through much community input, which we just heard and we've all probably participated in, the community wants a passive nature-based park with educational opportunities for events, like educational events, but also like weddings. I know that they wanted to redo the, the wedding altar that's been in disrepair out there. That will, events that will generate revenue. But it's important to recognize that the loud racket sport of pickleball will significantly impact all of these activities, from the contemplative viewpoints to trying to do an event on the, the front lawn. And the pickleball is played seven days a week, seven hours a day. There is a break from noon to 2:00 every day. So you could technically do events in that time. But for the rest of the time, you know, till 7:00 PM, there, there will be loud racket sports play. So the council has not been successful in mitigating the noise from the courts. The players ignore the recommended use of quieter paddles for the most part. So I urge you to seriously consider what will work, what type of sound walls will work, not only for the neighbors, of course, but for eventual parkgoers. Otherwise, your ideal of a passive contemplative nature-based park cannot be realized. I hope you'll consider the significant limitation that pickleball poses to the design of the park before you build it. And that to allocate the funds that will be needed to probably build an enclosed structure there to mitigate the sound fully for the, the parkgoers and everyone else. And not, not to mention, of course, the neighbors who have been tortured for five years from the excessive noise that pickleball generates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Quimby.
I just have a quick note that as I recall, when you were, when there was an open survey on, on the website for the Green Coalition, there were quite a number of people who supported the pickleball use and even asked for an expansion of the pickleball use. So it wasn't that, it was 100% of the people who wanted it to be a passive quiet place. There was quite a participation in the surveys that indicated that people were also very happy playing pickleball there. I just want that to be noted for the record.
I'm, I'm not hearing that being debated tonight, but thank you for bringing that up. Anybody, any other public comments? Yes. I ju, I just heard a comment, not, not a debate, but anyway. Yes, please say who you are. Tell us your name.
I'm Dale Hanson. I live in the city of Ojai.
Thanks, Dale.
And I, I think that the pickleball courts will do nothing for the nature law and quiet.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Any other comments? With that, we will close the special meeting presentations for today. And I'm going to hit this little special thing and start our first, first or our official open session. And we will start over again and start with the roll call, please. Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember May.
Here.
And for those of you who wanted to say the pledge of allegiance twice in one day, now's your chance.
Three times.
Mr. Montgomery, please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Yes, okay. Oh, yeah.
I've got a couple of. Well, actually, I'm, I'm just going to raise one at this point. And that is that if we get to a point where it, where it looks like we're not going to be able to get through each agenda item, I'd like to move item number five up. So far, I don't see that that is a problem. I, I was going to say that item number three is probably the one that's the least time sensitive. I, I don't know that for sure, but I know that there is time sensitivity issues related to number five.
I might offer a suggestion, which is doing a check-in at 9:00 PM and saying, we, we can certainly reorganize or move anything around at that time because I agree number five needs to be addressed tonight. Okay. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And we heard all those in favor? Yes, with that caveat? Okay. Wonderful. Let's go to any commission reports.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. And then city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few quick items. One, as you may know from reading the agenda packet this evening, staff has been working with the Fire Safety Council on a revised proposal. We did receive a revised proposal, I should say a re-revised proposal. We're working collaboratively together to bring back something with what we think is the scope and detail that council will want to see. And we do anticipate having that at your meeting on the 26th. So just wanted to report that out to you. Couple more quick items. We've started our work on the citywide speed study and the speed hump policy. We've met with the traffic engineer and another engineer. And so anyway, look for that in the next couple of months. That will be coming back to you at council level here. The community will be offered in the near future, the ability to use a coupon program for mulch. And so there'll be information on that, social media and on the website and as a press release. And then I think lastly, our city clerk has a, a just a brief process improvement announcement. And Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Harvey. Council, as you know, last year you did approve some agenda management software. I promise you it's coming. Agendas are highly important because of the limited nature that you, as a legislative body, can speak. So I just have three points in the, I promise. Number one, we have some fun videos and instructions planned for the public because there are going to be some new digital formats and some new ways to submit written public comments. So we don't want any confusion on where they will find these. Number two, we're going to be inviting you council members and mayor to the clerk's office to go over all the new digital updates to make sure these improvements are done successfully. We're also going to be implementing some staff training coming up on August 20th with our product grandicus, which this council approved. So I am looking forward to it as your chief deputy city clerk for these improvements. Um, so I am looking forward to it as your chief deputy city clerk for these improvements. Uh, the third one is the internal processes improvements of logs and checklists, um, to ensure the proper compliance with the Brown Act and, um, the highly detailed and important reports getting to the public. Um, this is the last point here. Um, we're, we're implementing a new system as we're currently, you know, knocking down an impacted council meeting schedule. So we can't afford to have, you know, any oversights as we implement software, um, from our manual processes. So that's my mouthful of a report. Thank you, City Manager Harvey. If you had anything else?
Sure, I just want to add, so what, what Weston is saying is we're going to have a belt and suspender approach here. We will actually have a manual checklist on top of this new software going forward. And it's just trying to make sure your agenda is tight, that you don't have issues where we have to make last minute changes, and that's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions? Okay, I will move on to public communications and these would be comments of, for items that are not on the agenda. And I'll start with Ron Solarsano, Alicia Marinus, and then Eric Reiter. Please. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, members of council. My name is Ron Solarsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on a couple of events that are coming up this month at the library. Uh, I'll start off by saying that local Ojai author Len Leatherwood is going to be visiting the Ojai Library at 2:00 PM on Saturday, August 23rd, uh, to give a talk on her book, which is titled, "Hope in a Time of Dying." Uh, Leatherwood is, uh, let's see, going to be joining us for a powerful reading and conversation centered around, uh, this award-winning novel, which is a deeply moving story set in 1994 at the height of the AIDS epidemic. The novel explores the complexities of truth-telling, family loyalty, and personal transformation through the eyes of a woman who moves her family to Los Angeles to support her HIV-positive brother. The event is going to include a reading from the book, as well as, uh, a behind-the-scenes look at some of its real-life inspiration and a discussion of how fiction can help us face hard truths with compassion and courage. So that is again, uh, Saturday, August 23rd. The following day, shift in topic, uh, we're going to have something for children. Uh, the, on Sunday, August 24th, we're going to have an art buffet at the Ojai Library, uh, from 12:30 to 2:00 PM. This is going to be just kind of a, uh, a grab bag of activities, uh, for little ones to come by. It's going to include collage, uh, paint, some crafts, and just general creative, uh, opportunities, uh, for folks. So that's going to be again, Sunday, uh, August 24th. Uh, those are the big things that we have going on right now, um, that are one-off events. But of course, we always have our weekly storytimes, Wednesday mornings at 10:30. We have the ukulele club on Mondays. We have our poetry, uh, events once a month on second Tuesdays in the evening and just a whole bunch of other stuff. You can check out our website, uh, WWW, ooh, apologies, it changed. WWW dot library dot Ventura County dot gov. That is our new website. The old website also still works, uh, but the new one will take you there as well. Uh, more information online and you can always contact me or come by the library if you have any questions at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Alicia Marinus, Eric Reiter, and then Maria Mall, please.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm back again. Um, I'm here about the trolley again. Um, it's been almost five months since we've had the trolley running on Sundays. It is unfortunately affecting our, anybody who is a trolley rider, they cannot go to any of their Sunday services. Um, their churches and things like that, it does affect them. Uh, secondly, it's been over five years since we've had an A and B route. So that means that we have to wait an extra hour before it comes back around again. And that can definitely impact people, especially during the summer or during the winter months, where there may not be shelters on every location, and it is very hard. So you have your senior and elderly who may be, and I brought visuals just so you guys can understand what I'm talking about, but our elderly who may be having mobility issues. Unfortunately, they may be with a cane and it, the CDC suggests that no more than 10 pounds. Within that, I also brought visuals on what 10 pounds is.
Just come into the microphone so then it could be, the people on video can hear you.
But this is, this is 10 pounds of groceries. That's maximum three days' worth of food. Doesn't look like very much, but that's for one person, one senior. So they can only carry that much with them every time they go on the trolley. And if they have to wait, then let's say it takes, I don't know, you get dropped off over across from Vons from Whispering Oaks, you get, you get on Whispering Oaks and you end up over at, across the street from Vons, at Memorial Park, and then you walk over, that's seven minutes. It took me 20 minutes to do, collect this stuff and I'm an able-bodied person going through Vons. And then if I don't get back in time to make it back that route, I have to wait again for another 45 minutes approximately for another trolley to show up on the opposite side, which is another walk. It, and most seniors can only walk approximately 300 feet or more with a cane carrying 10 pounds. So that is why it isn't a viable option to have Gulf Coast Transit be our only primary place because Park and Ride is over half a mile away from Whispering Oaks. They're not going to be able to carry their food. They're not going to be able to be independent. Seventy-five to 90% of all seniors say that they want to be independent and stay in age and place, which means that they live where they've always lived. They know those, those things. They are in their social areas. I think it's very important that we make this a possibility to keep pushing forward, getting those trolley drivers, getting more, maybe even hiring them where we have a full-time instead of a part-time, and maybe we'd actually keep people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, do you want to just give us a report out on where we're at? No, thank you. I know, try, try to hold off if you can. I know, it's, it's tempting to want to clap.
Um, yes, as, as we've been communicating probably, um, most recent council meetings, we're actively in the process of recruiting, um, interviewing, training drivers. Uh, in fact, we have a new driver who is starting training on Friday, uh, who will be working the Saturday, uh, shift. Uh, we also have, uh, two trolleys which, uh, we, we purchased, um, earlier, uh, in the year that we're almost finished with retrofitting to join into the fleet, which will help us. Uh, we, um, are talking to you all about, uh, potential, uh, classification compensation adjustments, which, which could ultimately be helpful, uh, for the trolley driver classification. It remains, um, a top priority. We feel that we're close to restoring Sunday service. I know I've been telling you this for some time, but it is a concerted effort. Uh, once we have Sunday service restored, then we can start talking about the potential to add the other route back in, but first and foremost, Sunday service.
Thank you. It is a huge priority for all of us. Eric Reiter, please. Maria Mall, and then Randy Roth. Hello, sir.
Hi. It's easy to try and dismiss issues with our trolley as making a mountain out of a molehill, if only that were the case. Instead, it's turned out to be the perfect litmus test for a city government with much larger issues and a so-called city manager at the center of it all, which gives birth to what is now the real question. How can you all not even see the problem? Falsely accusing a veteran of having PTSD for any reason is flat-out wrong, especially when that person, Mr. Anthony Palacios, was removed because he made things work better, quote, unquote. According to the AI, someone with antisocial disorder or narcissistic personality disorder may well just stoop to such a thing. Since Anthony is no longer the trolley supervisor, no progress has been made in, in its service, except to undermine it. Let's consider three facts of trolley operations in that time. Number one, drivers added. One and done. He's gone. Now rumor has it, there's another shell game driver onboard that still won't restore our service. Grade F. Number two, grants applied for and received. Zero. Grade F. Number three, maintenance. Who needs it, right, Mr. Harvey? Well, the law requires it. Grade F. Oh, wait. What's worse than F? Because God forbid there's an accident while state mandated maintenance requirements are being ignored. We can pray there'll be no injuries, but you can bet there'll be a lawsuit. What kind of city manager would make these kinds of choices? What's clear is the person who's gone is the person who should have stayed, and the person that's here should go. Before his legacy is your legacy. Again, how is it that the city Ojai government can, can't see the problem? Meanwhile, it is our Ojai city that will bear the financial opportunity costs of this administration for years down the line. However, at the least, you're most certainly giving birth to a necessary adage for all future Ojai city governments. Whatever we do, let's not end up with another Ben Harvey. The writing is on the wall. I suggest you all finally read it.
Thank you, sir. Maria Mall, please. Randy Roth, and then Barry Cohen.
Hi, I'm Mariah. It's actually.
Mariah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks for the correction.
So I'm here. My friend couldn't make it, so I'm actually reading her petition. So, um, we, the residents and stakeholders of the Ojai community are ready to express our deep concern and strong support for Anthony, who was hired as the trolley supervisor and has been put on super suspension with case in. Anthony is widely recognized by the community, trolley riders, and staff for his dedication to improve the trolley program. Together with the Parks and Recs team, he introduced many improvements such as the Christmas lights tour, which was a great success. He found grants to purchases of new trolleys. He made the system more reliable and personable and organized in arts. An Ojai Pixie Tour, summer kids ride to the lake from Nor- Nordoff. Since Anthony's immediate supervisor was arrested for shady dealings, we are hoping that Anthony could be brought back. Anthony is respected and appreciated. He is supported by the community, is a disabled veteran. The city of Ojai must not send a message that transparency and integrity are a punishable offense. We urge the city to do the right thing and stand with the people of Ojai in support of someone like Anthony that has done so much in a short time and took pride in his job. We are not losing interest and are paying attention. I also have some petitions that, um, I have been filling out on Anthony and trying to get him back and, yeah, they're all here. So my goal is to get Anthony back. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Roth, please. Barry Cohen. Oh, did Randy Roth leave? Okay, thank you. Barry Cohen, please. And then I, it looks like it's Nancy, and I can't read the last name. Guinevere? Something like that in the middle? Barry. Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I just kind of read it. Please.
Hi, I'm Barry Cohen. I'm the founder of Miners Oaks Community Garden, and I just wanted to come and say that fall registration for the garden is open. Uh, we have 38 beds that members can rent out biannually, um, and grow whatever they want. Um, the cost is $120 for six months and scholarships are available. Um, it includes the bed, soil, water, shared tools, discounts to workshops, and compost. And to apply, the website is WWW dot Miners Oaks Community Garden dot com. And I think that's it. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Uh, Nancy Owa, please. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And council. And I'm glad to hear that the trolley is still being brought up. I hope to see, I have family members who do not drive and rely on it. I'm lucky enough to still be able to drive, but we live on the east end and that's a future. One is in Miners Oaks, so they're affected by the present trolley, but we hope to see it extended actually. And for those of you, I grew up in Santa Monica and we had our ranch in Ojai, and it's just a gridlock in LA. So it could be an enticement to come, park your car, ride the trolley, and that would help us with the traffic. So I thank you and I hope for a speedy solution. It's something that can be done. There's so many things that are, you know, out of reach. So please, I, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Mayor, we do not have any raised hands, but let's take a moment. Oh, great.
Okay, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say thank you to, uh, to Weston and, uh, staff. Um, they've been working on a lot of public records requests from me, um, and they've done a really great job, uh, responding to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Um, uh, when I heard about the, um, engine failure on trolley number 12 on July 2nd, uh, I wanted to make sure that the trolleys were being maintained. Um, so I requested, uh, the maintenance records for the trolleys from the last year. It was a lot of them, uh, maybe over 60. And, um, I'm going to continue to monitor that because it's very important to me, uh, that the trolleys, uh, stay functioning. Um, that engine failure, uh, led to the brakes going out, uh, so the trolley couldn't be stopped very easily. Uh, fortunately, nobody got hurt, um, but I think it's really important to know. Uh, another update on the trolley, which I, I didn't hear, um, uh, Mr. City Manager say, and, and maybe he forgot, um, is that, uh, the trolley driver that was hired previously, um, is no longer a trolley driver. So we have a net, uh, zero change in trolley drivers over the last several months. For a really important issue that's top of the mind for the city manager, um, I haven't really seen any appreciable, uh, progress. Um, one thing also that I want to make sure gets discussed today is some of the lawsuits against the city. I've read about them in the paper. Pam Greer, Matt Davis, Renee Mora. Also, I think about some of the lawsuits that could be forthcoming. If Anthony Palacios is terminated, uh, what kind of lawsuit would come? Would he win? How many millions of dollars could that cost the city? I think it's important that we try and mitigate the risk from some of these lawsuits. And I think the biggest question of how we can stop the bleeding is whether the claims have merit. And I think it's important that this city research that. Some of the allegations are provable. Um, you can look through email records. You can look through time cards and see whether they happen or not. I think the first thing to say, though, is if the allegations are provable, are they a fireable offense? Should we maintain the city manager? I think that's a question that you all have to answer for yourselves and, um, then look into the records. I for one, I'm going to help with further public records requests. I'm going to ask for records responsive to all the allegations made in the lawsuits and I'll be sure to forward any findings I have to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Anything online?
Mayor, we still have no raised hands. I believe we can move on.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. And my first question is, does anybody want to pull any items from the consent calendar?
I do.
Okay, which one?
Um, what is it? Let me see.
Microphone, council member.
Yes, please. Oh, thanks.
I'm sorry, I'm going to tag them. It's for the detail.
Oh, that's I.
I, is that what it is? I.
Authorized First Amendment with pristine auto detailing. You want to pull that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to pull?
Um, no, I'm good. I will say though, like with the warrants that I did have questions, but I reached out to, uh, Ms. Billings and she was very kind in giving me, um, the feedback on the questions that I had.
Wonderful. Any other items that anyone would like to pull? Wonderful. So then what I will take first is any public comments on any items not pulled. So what I have in front of me here is I have Brian Akins on E, Wendy Barker on E. So, sorry, let me go in alphabetical order first. Burn. Clay Creasy on B, and Larry Steingold on B. Um, I'm following Mr. Summers' lead, so he was suggesting public comments on not pulled, then we vote. No, no, I know, I keep getting it wrong.
Right, no, exactly. Ensuring we get public comments before the vote. And then take the pulled items one by one.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. No, I know. Nope, good. Never hesitate to question my order. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight's warrant report discloses two payments that were made more than two months ago. Uh, a mortgage loan to the city manager and a payment to dignity moves. Normally, payments by the city are listed in a report at the next city council meeting. This serves the needs both for transparency and for financial control. So a logical question is, why were these items reported so late? The mortgage loan was made on May twenty-third. I learned about it on June twenty-eighth from a city council member. It surprised me because I had not seen it in a warrant list at that point. So I asked the interim finance director about that, and her reply was as follows. My staff was researching the accounting side of the entry, and so it wasn't entered in the system in time for the last warrant run. I do agree this loan was not a run-of-the-mill transaction, but the warrant report is just a list of dollars and payees. Thus, it is hard to see how accounting confusion should be blamed for missing a warrant report. In fact, this disclosure missed the next three warrant reports, and it only surfaced after I made my inquiry. The dignity moves payment was made on June fourth, and it should have been on the June twenty-fourth warrant list. Instead, we are hearing about it tonight, seven weeks later. A charitable explanation for these lapses would be that they were innocent mistakes. A less charitable explanation might involve a motivation to minimize scrutiny. But either way, the city staff knew that the warrant reports of June tenth and June twenty-fourth were incomplete, yet they said nothing, and this is not right. This also made me wonder if other undiscovered disclosure issues might be lurking in past warrant reports. So I took a look, and I'm sorry to say that I found one. Let me explain. The city's disbursement and payroll checks are sequentially numbered, and each warrant report includes these numbers. In theory, each new warrant report picks up where the last one left off, so that no disclosures are missed. This is an important cornerstone for good financial oversight and control. Unfortunately, I found nine disbursement checks and twelve payroll checks whose disclosures were skipped somewhere between May second and May twenty-seventh of this year. Given the circumstances surrounding the May fifteenth departure of our former assistant city manager, I would say these disclosure gaps are suspicious. The bottom line is, you need to investigate these things, and the city staff needs to improve its commitment to transparency. Because events like this tarnish our mutual bonds of trust, and that is not a healthy situation for any of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Anything we need to say?
Well, Ms. Billings, you wanna start, then I can finish up?
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, um, has had a lot of transition in the last few months, and they are working very hard to ensure that everything is disclosed, and those items are on there. If there are some checks that were not disclosed, I will certainly look into that and report back immediately. I, that's, it's the first I've heard of it, so I don't have the answers for what may have not been disclosed.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that this council, uh, had a special meeting, uh, back in May. You commissioned an independent third-party, uh, forensic investigation, the report, the results of which will be brought forward uh, at a September meeting, I believe. Is it the twenty-sixth, I think, of September? Am I wrong about that? Might be, might be the-
Standby, and I can confirm.
Um, so that's, that's forthcoming. Um, as far as, you know, the, the down payment loan and the dignity moves payments, I mean, I would agree that, you know, the timeliness on the warrant register should, should be there. That's something we'll work on. However, these are not, um, amount, these are not transactions that were not widely discussed in public multiple times, and also covered, uh, in the local media multiple times.
Yes. September twenty-third. Thank you.
And I'll add that we've been consultation with staff, and the Kroll firm is providing that special financial examination of Mr. Alameda's, uh, performance. That will be at a special meeting at five PM on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, ensuring full room for public discussion of their report and their findings.
Thank you very much. Larry Steingold, please, on one B.
Boy. Larry Steingold. Lots of warrants, amazing amount of number of warrants. All of a sudden, lots of things were paid. But if the staff knew that something was missing a month or two before, you would think they would make the adjustment the next month or whenever. But just following up on his, but that's not my, why I'm here. Um, the law firm for the STRs and TOT, what do they do for their thirteen thousand dollars? The TOT is sort of collected by tax, and it's a percentage, and STRs should be all of administrative. Now, if this is regarding collections, are they generating more income than they're worth? There has to be another way if we're paying them thirteen thousand. If, what, that, that's what it's for. Okay. Um, indemnification analysis, another sixty-five hundred dollars. What are you analyzing? Either you're paying indemnification, or you're not paying indemnification. We already understand. But why? For what? I mean, solve some of these things. These lawsuits are gonna be very expensive. Uh, and it would be nice to see a warrant in here for trolley driver for Sunday. Wouldn't that be nice? Hmm. Also, um, are there any expenses in the warrants that are just identified with a name regarding the Public Works Yard and what is going on that we're spending money? If we're spending any money out of the grant, or not, I don't know. What's reimbursable? What isn't reimbursable? I've heard all sorts of things. And rather than ask, I'm just curious as to what is going on. So, nice to see more warrants, but if they could be identified, like a little sentence or something underneath for what they're for, like Joe Jones Plumbing, something? Rather than just the name? Please, it would help you identify, 'cause you see a lot of things, and you don't have time. You've got, you know, it's a lot of reading. So I would, if it would make it easier for you, and make, certainly make it easier for us for identification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. I'm now on to one D. Valerie Freeman, please.
Mayor, maybe worth noting that the, the, with the able assistance of our interim finance director, Ms. Billings, staff has revamped the warrant register to include a line item for every single payment. I recognize some may want more detail than a single line, but the old pattern of just a vendor name and and an amount now reflects, as is seen in tonight's agenda, a vendor name, uh, albeit pithy, description of what it's for, and then the, the dates in the checks and so forth.
Right, I see that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mayor and City Council, I'm Valerie Freeman, Ojai city resident and former, former Ojai Arts Commissioner. For tonight's meeting, the minutes for the Arts Commission, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, and the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four meeting are to be approved. Both minutes state that public comments were received for items not on the agenda, which I believe is oversight. I submitted public comments for both meetings within a timely manner to the emails that were provided, and my comments did not, um, pertain to the agenda with item numbers listed. And the sub, and I listed the item numbers in the subject. My comments can be verified on the city's website, next to the Arts Commission, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting agenda, and the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four meeting agenda. I believe California has laws for the public's right to accurate, timely information, requiring truthful, non-misleading communication and transparency. I recommend you to pull this item and send it back to the Arts Commission for review and updating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, I, I do, I have a question. So, um, under public comments, it says the Arts Commission received comments from the public at this time for items not on the agenda.
Right.
And that was for your public comment, correct?
I submitted public comments for items that were on the agenda, and they said there were no, that there were public comments, but they, uh, were not items on the agenda. And I, I submitted, I, I sent them to, um, Mr. Harvey today also because I CC'd him and at the time I sent in the public comments.
Is the discrepancy that you are saying that it was, you, you saying it was on the agenda and they're saying it wasn't?
If I could jump in.
Oh, please, yeah.
Maybe the case-
Maybe I'm confused, but I, I feel like as if they're, they said that, um, my public comments weren't items that were on the agenda, and they, they were.
Mayor, it may be the case that, uh, Ms. Freeman is concerned the line regarding public comments only reflects the non-agenda public comments. That's what's in item three in each of these minutes.
I see that.
Public comments were, I believe, received on the other items on the agenda, but that's not separately stated in the minutes.
Right.
Certainly, it could be added if council wished, but the, the line there is not negating that you did provide comments.
Right.
Rather, it's reflecting what happened at the agenda item number three for general public comment of those meetings.
Oh, okay.
Cause there's no, there's no comments included at all.
We don't write in on the rest, every single public comment that was received, 'cause we do action minutes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we, do we in any way acknowledge that there were comments on particular agenda items for the Arts Commission? I guess that is the question.
Yes, through the tape, which is the full record of it. So they're available on the city's YouTube and Granicus websites that have the tape of the meeting, which would include your comments, and for anything that's received by email or otherwise in writing.
That's in the commission handbook, actually.
Uh, in the, uh, city's full records of the meeting, which could be available upon request.
And also, and, cause I watched the video, that the chair didn't ask for public comments with each agenda item.
So that's, I, that's a little different than what we can do here tonight.
Yeah, that sounds like a, uh, we're continuing our education for our chair and liaisons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna bring this up again just because it always confuses me. I know that we say that the record is the videotape, and I had hoped that when we were upgrading our system, we would have a system by where you didn't need to watch four hours of a meeting in order to have a record, because that, to me, is an obstacle unbearable. Like, to have to watch four hours of a meeting to figure out what was actually said.
Understood.
Um, as opposed to actually having minutes that might actually give you at least broad strokes.
No, you, so I'm gonna jump in here. You, you will be in the new system, be able to jump to an item, but public comment is public comment. We are not going to go through public comment and categorize it by who's speaking.
No, I, and, and although we used to do that, and we stopped doing that with no notice to the council, I will just mention that. Um, that just disappeared. We used to know who said what, which I thought was incredibly helpful.
Might I propose that this is an item that we could bring up and say, let's look at systems that can fund more of the stuff, but not in this item right now?
You would need more resources.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's great, and I just wanted also to check in that the new system doesn't allow searches. So perhaps that is a future agenda item where we can make this kind of detail and information more readily available.
If the council directs that, we could, but it's, it's gonna, it's just gonna take some additional resources.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I actually have a question, um, and this is just tangential to that item. When we receive minutes, and we regular, regularly receive minutes from commissions, um, you know, other than the liaison that may have been attending, um, are we just, like, receiving them to be filed as opposed to we're, we're doing anything to verify the accuracy of, of meeting we didn't go to? So I'm, I'm just wondering the legal purpose of our-
The legal agenda item is to literally receive and file.
Mm-hmm.
It's done to do, one, to ensure that the council and the community, through the greater visibility of council agendas, is aware of what's happening at the commission meetings, and two, to surface issues that may need resolution at a separate agenda item. But there's no, there's no legal requirement. You're not certifying this or that. Action happened or didn't happen. It happened or didn't happen based on the video and what happened at the meeting.
And further, these are advisory boards.
Right.
Right, with some exceptions, yeah.
So then, the, the follow-up would be that if there's a question about the accuracy of one of the commission minutes that we receive, it needs to be resolved at the commission level, because we're not really in a position to r- resolve anything, other than watching the videotape.
Those issues in the past, and yes, every set of minutes that comes to the council is approved by that commission.
I was just gonna ask that.
Before it comes to the council. So, I mean, we've had issues in the past where commissions are fighting over minutes, and that takes a while to come to the council.
Just, just to say what you just said one more time. So before we receive them, that commission approved their minutes already. Just to follow up. Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Mang, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, because I was just curious too, with, uh, um, various commissions, and I think I brought it up with Weston, um, to, for all of us to get a copy of the public comments. I think it could be helpful to know what people are thinking, what the community's thinking, just to have them in our file.
We, we could do that. Currently, we, um, I believe the, the process is the liaison receives that. Um, and so if the council, if all council members want all comments, wh- what I've received in the past is some council members don't.
Okay, cause I was just thinking, you know, we only have three months and then to move on, so we go and we have some sort of his-
And that's part of why we have a liaison, so that, that's the liaison's responsibility to kind of be going through that. However, you can direct us, and we can, every council member can receive all, but that's-
You could also list what you want to receive, like, agenda items on, and you would get those automatically too, yeah.
But I think this should come back as a future agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like a future agenda item, right, to look at all these.
I wanna follow up on that because, and, and maybe I'm, you know, gonna expose my ignorance here, but it seems to me like if I wanna know what the public comments are for a commission meeting, you know, don't we have that page where we list the meetings, and it, and it lists the agenda, and then it lists the comments? And then, so you can click on those, you could click on the tapes. So if you wanna see the comments, you can actually go to that website page and click on it. I'm, I mean, I'm not hallucinating that.
Yeah, present, you can click on the website, and, and it'll take you to the comments part of each meeting.
That's right.
I believe we also have the written public comments for at least some of the meetings up on the website.
Correct.
Or available by, upon request. I think the challenge would be if people wanted to be able to read the, what was said orally at a meeting, that's something that we don't presently have the capability to do. Doing that is, is something that could be done with council direction, and that would be a future agenda item.
There is some-
I would note as well, obviously, the world is changing with AI, which are not perfect transcripts, but are cheaper than staff.
That's right.
So there's an opportunities there, and I believe that could be a conversation with our new software vendor, if council so directs it.
Yep.
And, and then the new software is gonna allow you to click on public comments on the, on the tape, and it's gonna take you right there, and you can listen.
Yeah, it'll have bookmark. It'll have, you have to listen, but it'll, it'll have bookmarks, so to speak. So you can click item three, and it'll go to item three instead of having to scroll through.
That's easy to do in YouTube right now. You just have to, you have to watch it and make a chapter or a bookmark, so it will, I, I love that we can do a little bit more with that, but your point is well taken. You can go look at that right now, if you want to.
Yeah, and YouTube also has an, an AI feature right now that allows you to transcribe the entire thing, and so you can have, I've been doing this for a lot of our meetings. Uh, you can actually have transcripts of everything that happened in the meeting, and that way they're searchable. So if you wanna create a file on your computer, there are lots of, lots of, of interesting things you can do right now.
They, there, I have found it not perfect, but pretty good.
I, I've found it unusable myself, because I get the transcript, and it's, there's no indication of who's speaking unless someone says, "Council member rule would now like to say."
I see.
So I, I can't figure out who's saying what, um, you know, and, and I've done a lot of it, and it just takes, you might as well watch the tape, for God's sakes. Um, it's less frustrating too. I mean, then you put it into a transcribing software.
The answer to, I'm sorry for-
So, so I would like to put that on, on an agenda item, because it just can't be, I know you can take the YouTube transcript, put it into an AI, and they will try to figure out the voices for you. Then they don't know anything. So I'm, I'm assuming that there must be some sort of software that would allow you to do this pretty seamlessly.
So we're taking that, so we'll take it as an X.
It would be huge, yeah.
Got it.
So I, I have one more question. Um, so we currently, for every commission, you have the ability, a, a resident or any council member, or anybody can register to receive the agenda.
That's correct.
Can you also register to see, to receive the comments? Or is that something we're not currently offering?
I did wanna make a point from the clerk's office here for accuracy. We post the comments, the written public comments for the council in a link. That is not consistent for all city commissions, although we've noticed a need for it lately, and I've been working with the each commission liaison, the staff liaison, um, to make this available. So, for example, I don't believe the Arts Commission has that comments link. So we've been, that's been coming up in the recent weeks, and we're gonna get that online.
Okay.
Cause it's important. And I don't believe we presently have a way to sign up to receive written comments from every, automatically receive written comments from eat, from any given commission. That's beyond our present staff capability. But all written comments are public records, so you could file requests with the clerk's office for any given commission, but it's not automatic yet, and that's another software project.
And I think the question was, is the public, does the public have access to, for instance, we have all of the public comments for the council?
Mm-hmm.
Does the public have access to that? Can they go and click on and get all the public comments? Yes, they could make a records request, but do they have access to the public comments?
The council, all the comments for the council meetings are on the website. You can click, navigate around and click them.
Okay.
For the commissions, you need to make a request.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to consent item E. First Brian Akins, then Wendy Barker.
Hello.
Hey.
Brian Akins, uh, I have my museum hat on right at this second. I'm going back to one of my DVDs I watch for trainer to, that I don't do often enough, always starts with, and let's start off with a big happy smile. So just livening things up. As with my museum hat on, I am up here to thank you on item number E for that support, for that, uh, adding that additional contribution. Uh, very helpful and very much appreciated by all. Now, on the other side, yes, I can see public comments. It usually shows up as comments on the thing, and I click on that, and I print out the ones I like, which includes the six that are in my chair down here. Other than that, yes, I hate watching four hours worth of meetings, especially when I have to listen to my voice. So, yes. So thank you again very much for, for your support of the Ojai Valley Museum.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. It's our pleasure. Ms. Barker, please.
I'm Wendy Barker. I'm the director of the Ojai Valley Museum. I want to thank you, just like Brian did, as our treasurer, um, for your support for item E, which is the increase in funding, and also for F, which is new roof. Cause we've been seeing some leaks the last couple of years. So we're really excited about that. We appreciate very much working with the city. And I just want to say, we got a new exhibit opening on Thursday with the reception this Friday from five to seven. It's the Ojai Studio Artists Annual Exhibition. This year it's called Metamorphosis. Um, we have sixty-two artists in the show. It's great. We hope to see you out at any time. And also I want to say to all the council members, I would love to individually give you behind the scene tours at any time. So just contact me through the museum, and I'd love to set that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just, I just want to say that I consider, um, the, the Ojai Valley Historical Society Museum to be an Ojai treasure.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it, it just, it elevates us. And so thank you very much for all of your work.
Okay.
So, and I just wanted to congratulate our executive director that as of the beginning of July has been with us for ten, ten wonderful years.
Wow.
Ten wonderful years.
Congrats. Well, well done. Thank you for that. I have one more public comment here. Renee Roth on H.
Renee Roth, Ojai, and, um, I definitely support the, the grant funding for the ATP project. And, uh, one of the things I was hoping to get is my daughter to come and talk about her concerns about bicycle safety and bicycle riding in Ojai. She has returned to Ojai. She's living here now. She says you cannot be on the bike path at night, because it just is not safe. There is no lighting down there. It's really a concern. If we're trying to be a green, sustainable, ride-your-bike community, bicycle lighting, and I know it has to be dark sky compliant, but I am, I am really wanting to push that somehow we can get more bicycle lighting uh, late at night on our dark sky ordinance, uh, consideration in future pedestrian and bicycle, uh, projects. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so now, according to my little list here, we can do a vote on items A through H unless there's any discussion or, or motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
I will second that. Anymore? Mr. Montgomery, please.
Yes, motion understood, Mayor. Roll call. Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
No, I had.
We're gonna talk about I now, now. I read it right next.
It's separate.
This is separate. This is about the warrants.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said you asked Ms. Billings and she answered.
No, she did on some of those, but now with the, um, information that Mr. Creasy brought up, I'm just wondering, you know, with those, with the table, if, um, if we should pull this from the agenda, and then she said she could get the answers to us in a timely fashion.
The approval is of the list that you, uh, that is presented before you. Um, it can certainly be postponed if you want, but then that would not, um, it's not gonna change the list that's.
It's not gonna change the payments that have been made, but the explanations will be forthcoming, is what I'm hearing Ms. Billings say.
Okay, so if you, alright, cause I would like explanations to see.
Before you vote.
That's my.
So then I guess my suggestion would be vote no.
Yep.
Okay. So you started with me, yes?
Continuing roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, so now we are on to I, and I'll say, tell me, tell me what you're thinking on I.
Well, it just seems, um, you know, for fifty thousand dollars to wash detailed cars just seems, you know, I, I, I don't see it. It seems like a lot of money to put out, um, for that.
We have Ms. Palmer to address it, it looks like.
We do, yes. So it's a high cost. Um, we, we based this on last year's actual cost. The last year's actual costs were about forty-eight thousand dollars. So we had a, um, the fellow from Pristine Auto Detailing come out and give us a revised or an estimate for the coming year, and this is what we came up with. So it's expensive. Um, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars per trolley to wash. So this includes the fleet in addition to the trolley. So, um, two hundred and fifty dollars every week he comes out to wash the trolleys, and then another twelve hundred if he details. So it's expensive. I mean, if you take your personal car, it's gotten very expensive. So, um, we thought it was important to have the trolleys washed and detailed, but it, the detailing only happens as needed. It's not a weekly, a weekly, um, thing at all, but the washing is. So inside and out. Um, and we wash our fleet vehicles that our Public Works crew uses, um, bi-weekly, so every other week. And that's just kind of a quick wash on the outside. They have their tools and such supplies on the inside, so it doesn't really make sense for that. So, um, and I would, I would caution too, if, um, as Mr. Harvey mentioned, we, our hope is to have more trolleys online. So if that happens, this cost may even go up. So, but this is a not-to-exceed amount, so we would be coming back to council if, if and when that ever changes.
I think the other thing I'd like to add is, you know, we, um, took you with the trolleys. We, we've made an effort really to improve their appearance. We, you know, we, we purchased new ones. We, we've had them refurbished. You're, you're maintaining that investment. They're also high use. Um, and so one of the things that happened when I came on board is we weren't washing or detailing our trolleys at all. And they hadn't been cleaned for, there was no recent record. I think it was like a, over a year. And so we really felt that was important, that the public deserved to have clean, nice-looking trolleys in particular. But we also feel that you should have that for the city vehicles that are driving around. They have the city seal on it. We don't want you to see vehicles that are, you know, we're not overly washing them, but we think that, we take some pride in what we, what we do, and we want to look our best and present our best image forward.
And as we invest in our, in our fleet, both trolley and, and EVs as we move forward, we do like to keep them. I mean, the more we maintain them, both inside and out, and mechanically and aesthetically, the longer they last.
Now, thank you for that.
Okay, so I, I do have a question, and that is, have we looked at the idea of doing, um, the cleaning in-house? Like having staff, uh, do the cleaning? Is it more cost-effective to use this contractor? Or would it be more cost-effective if we use city staff?
It's probably more cost-effective doing it this way. We have also looked at vouchers and taking them down to, you know, the local car wash. And we are still actually exploring that option to do that. Um, we're, we're kind of still working through how to, um, maintain the fleet. It makes more sense for the trolleys to be done here. We have a wash pad right outside of my office across the street. So it's, NPDES is stormwater, um, compliant, so the water, you know, the waste is going down where it should be going. So it's, and, and the size of them, it just is not suitable taking them to facilities.
If that threshold ever changes in your estimation, or your estimation that an employee makes sense, please don't hesitate.
We are always looking at efficiencies.
Okay, good. Yes.
We are.
Thank you. I have no public comments on this item. Is there anything online? Um, I realize I didn't ask you about that for the other item.
No raised hands, Mayor. Let's just, we'll keep it at no raised hands.
May I suggest a motion for I to approve I?
I'll make a motion to approve I.
I will second that. Any more discussion? Mr. Montgomery, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
No.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Um, seven forty-three. I bet we could do number two and then take a break, if everybody's okay with that. Can we move on to two wildfire safety and risk mitigation update, Mr. Harvey?
You bet, and I'll be brief. Uh, we've already touched on part of this during my council, excuse me, my city manager report. Um, there, this is really just a status update with one action for you to consider. We know this is an important topic, and we just want to keep you posted as to what's going on as we work to bring forward a revised proposal from the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. I just want to let you know that we've had some very positive and collaborative discussions. Again, we're really just trying to adhere to that council direction, to bring forward the two components, uh, within the proposal that you wanted to see. But with that type of granularity that we require as a city, and, and the, the public and the council, uh, deserves as far as what's composed in the various assignments. So that is in the works right now. Been talking to Chris and Callie and Randy and others, and anyway, we expect that to come back to you on the twenty-sixth. Uh, secondly, the second part of the directive was the RFP for the, uh, fuel reduction. Ms. Palmer and, uh, the fire chief, uh, and I have been, uh, discussing that. We, uh, as was alluded to previously, there is a fair amount involved with that, including, um, a desire on the staff side to bring you a comprehensive package that really kind of looks at not only the city-owned properties, but other strategic areas in and around Ojai that you may want to consider as part of this. So, um, we are, uh, gonna be bringing that along with the, the permits that are gonna be required and the effort. Uh, just as a fun, Wendy and I were meeting yesterday to go through this, and she, um, advised me, reminded me that the Stewart Canyon, um, effort, which did involve a lot of removal and permits, uh, in total was almost a million dollars. Um, so I'm not saying that all these are going to be a million dollars, but we may end up having to break it into pieces. And again, being strategic about that. The fire chief has reminded Ms. Palmer and I that despite, um, some of the media that you may hear, SEQA and NEPA are still required for a lot of these permits. And so, uh, those processes, um, will have to be adhered to unless something changes at the state or federal level in that area. So that's the first two pieces that are just kind of update matters. Last one, and I've got, I've got Ms. Billings up here with me, is you asked that we set, uh, aside a, a fire budget, if you will. Um, so to help you with that, we included a breakdown as an attachment to this item of, of measure C. And you can see, since its inception, how much we've collected and how much we have expended in the various, uh, categories that the voters approved as part of the ballot language, um, back in twenty twenty. Uh, you have an ending fund balance a little over two million dollars. Um, and what I'd like to recommend just to be prudent, but also to adequately, um, make an impact while understanding that there are other categories within measure C that need to be handled as well, that you consider a one million dollar annual set aside in this area for items related to, um, fire. If you did that, if you wanted us to do that, we'd bring back, um, a, give me the correct term, Ms. Billings.
The, you'd have a revised CIP?
Well, that, but also it'd be a budget, uh, budget allocation that we'd be bringing back.
Budget amendment would come.
You've adopted, sorry, let me jump back in. You've adopted a five-year CIP budget going forward. So you, if you would be taking a step like that, we would be amending that CIP budget to reflect that. Uh, it would mean, you know, that you would be probably doing maybe a little less in paving and some other areas, but that's a policy decision. Uh, and it's an appropriate one if you look at, you know, the, the ballot language, I feel, in my opinion, from those areas that were identified. So.
We could decide that later.
You can decide that later, absolutely. So anyway, that, that's kind of the long and short of this particular item. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
So are you, I'm sorry, yes. So are, are you asking for us to give you the go-ahead to do that? Okay.
That's, that's, that's recommendation num- number.
And, and do we need, need to make a motion for that?
We, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Then the other part that I didn't, I didn't respond to, which was also part of your direction back on July twenty-ninth, is I need to do some work as, for these siren estimates. It's just been very preliminary, high-level discussion. I do not have that detail for you yet, but I will.
And Ms. Rule, I'm, I, that, that dollar amount, luckily, I, I'm, I saw that dollar amount, and I said, well, it's not allocated. I mean, it's the framework is how I was thinking about it without the assignment yet of vendors and work, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I knew you saw that. I was just, I was saying my own process there.
I wasn't looking to allocate that. I was just looking to see, instruct the city manager to move forward with a rough calculation budget based on a ceiling of a million dollars or an amount of a million dollars, whatever.
I think that helps us think about these things in, in a way that we have thought about things like road paving and things like that at that kind of magnitude, but you were.
Um, I just have one question. So I'm aware that some initiatives that we have for climate or for other CIP projects would also be co-categorized as fire mitigation or fire reduc-, fuel reduction? Is that, is that correct?
Well, I, I think we're gonna take a little different approach in this area. So we've spent money, and we do have a future agenda item coming to you, talking about all the money we've spent on climate. While we spent a lot of time during a recent meeting talking about energy efficiency measures that could be part of fire hiring, and they're actually identified later in this agenda, I would, we, we could add some granularity. I'm thinking specifically like the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council proposal. I'm thinking like an investment to purchase two community sirens. Just things that really are kind of clearly, or, or, you know, an RFP effort for fuel reduction. Sorry?
Direct fire risk reduction.
Yeah.
As a thing from larger term, obviously the, the driver of much of the fire risk that we see is climate change.
Is, is, are these actions reducing, you know, the chance of fire or helping the community in times of fire?
So much overlap though.
My guidepost.
Even what we heard from the Green Coalition today, and we see what's gonna happen here is gonna include, let's say, the removal of these trees. You, as long, I mean, we, I think we must know that they are gonna cover many bases, uh, the one activity. We, but we understand that.
But I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna blur things a little bit. What we also are gonna be coming back with, um, at a future agenda that the council will allow us, is we'd like to, uh, propose a measure C, uh, policy, where it's very clear, you know, what you're doing with measure C. There's a process and a cadence to review revenues and expenditures an- annually. So, um, more information than what you have now.
Thank you.
So is this number that you're asking us to put in, uh, is it, uh, is it just a placeholder for us to?
Yes.
To subsequently, and you're, and you want the number to be high enough that you can be flexible with these programs, but
I'm looking at what.
The ultimate number might be, you know, half or twice or whatever.
Well, okay, like anything that you guys budget for, you set, you set the ceiling, and you set what you'd like to be spent within that, and we, we follow that direction. So you don't have to spend up to that dollar amount, that, you know, you don't have to do that. But I think that you have the capacity to spend a million dollars in a manner that you aren't impacting, you know, measure C calls for, capital improvement and maintenance projects, including streets, tree maintenance, fire mitigation, code enforcement, climate change mitigation. So, you know, trying to address it, you have four or five categories there. Dividing that up in a manner that consistent with the revenues that you, that we've received historically, and not, and not expending money, so you have no fund balance left over.
So I, i- in this may be more appropriate for the discussion, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we're allocating for one of multiple purposes without deciding what we need for those other purposes, so that it all fits together.
So that, and that's a fine concern. This is just council direction that you gave, and so we're fulfilling that. If you'd prefer that we come back, you know, just with a measure C policy with, with allotments for, for the budget, then that's, that's fine too. But the direction was to come up with a fire, I mean, oh, I think I have the direction. Actually, I'm not gonna read it to you.
Well, I think what's interesting about that is, I, it wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that a measure C policy drives the fire mitigation. It would be that the fire mitigation needs drives the spend. And then we figure out how to spend.
So.
The only, the only caution I'm gonna issue to you, not issue, just advise you of, is, you know, the voters, you know, there's ballot language.
Right. Right.
And in, in the ballot language is very clear for these certain areas. So you want to make sure that you're, you're adhering to the voters' wishes for, for these, these monies that were approved is the only thing I would tell you.
I meant to say it might extend beyond Measure C.
That's fine. You can certainly dip into your own program general fund balance. You, as policymaker, certainly can do that.
That's what I meant by that.
That's, yeah.
I'm going to interject real quickly because I made the motion to bring this back. And the reason why I made the motion and my intention of it is that, is to get fire, to, to prioritize fire in our budgeting process. So that just like we prioritize climate and just like we prioritize other, other aspects of, of the city, of our government, that we are, that we have a budget line item for fire risk mitigation, fuel removal, all of the things that, that keep our community safe. And, and so, and so that was my original intention is let's get the conversation started, not let's, and, and to have staff come up with some potential numbers for that. But it wasn't for us to, it was for us to get the conversation started, to, to, to talk about how we want to, how we want to pay for some of the fire risk mitigation and, and reduction efforts.
And, and that's what I understood. We've had conversations about this, that we need to start putting some structure to all of these sort of, you know, sub, sub-projects and really start to form it. And so that's what I understood, and I don't think we're married to any amount of money, but I think it's a fair ceiling or starting point to say a million dollars because we know the cost of this. We also know, you know, you know, the cost of everything, but you know the value of nothing. So meaning, that's Oscar Wilde, meaning to say that, you know, you can detail the costs, but when you look at the value, what are the costs related to that? So I think it's, I, I'm fine with that being a starting point. I'm fine for it being a discussion. We seem to have the money. We, as I mentioned at the Budget Committee, and I wasn't being snarky, that, you know, we haven't, we haven't even incorporated the El Roblar into this. So there's that as well, and this money is to be allotted between these four categories. So let's, let's take a look at what we have. Let's allot, let's prioritize. And let's think, and, and the only thing that, that I, I don't quite understand is the Venn diagram between sort of climate and fire. Like, that's what I got confused in the last meeting. So is planting native species to, you know, so we'll need some clarity on that, and that's my, that's the only.
And that's why we want a policy.
Yeah, that's why I'm grappling right now.
Policy's going to define that.
I want to know where these tranches are and what falls in it and.
That makes sense.
You know, not that it's not negotiable or changeable, but, yeah.
I mean, just a procedural point, I think this is discussion and we should be receiving.
Let's, let's do the public comment now.
Public comment.
Now, thank you for that. So let me start with Brian Akins and Valerie Freeman then on item number two.
Okay, Brian Akins, I'm, I got my, I'm a commissioner of the Historic Preservation Commission hat on, but I'm not here as a commissioner, just more personally. I, a month ago, maybe, so many meetings going on. I talked about the fact that this, right in our own backyard is a very flammable area with tall trees going up that would become the match lighting up our whole valley. And I really appreciate seeing that this was picked up in the newspaper, supported by the council and all of the comments that are going on tonight. Very, very much appreciate that. It is a lovely campus behind us. What, what Kathy and the Green Coalition, Coalition have done and the maps that they've drawn up there are, and watching this whole process over the years that they've done is just inspiring and it shows how much our community cares about this property that unfortunately, they don't come and take advantage of it, of it as I'm sure we'd all like. So again, thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Valerie Freeman, Bill Miley, and Larry Steingold. Valerie, Bill Miley, and Larry Steingold.
Hello. Hi. I see item two is wildfire proposal update, city fuel clearance, property fuel clearance, and alert siren. How can anyone be against these positive proposals? I reviewed the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council Original Proposal Section A, which was extensive, and B1. Further detailing numbers and outcomes seems very appropriate. Look forward to that. Their intentions and directions are very laudable. Keeping the city property in low wildfire fuel state is certainly worthy. I would suggest that there be a reoccurring year-to-year review and trimming to keep it that way. But to begin, I would like a comment from the Public Works Director as to how much of this ongoing need can be met through Public Works staffing. And to help educate our residents and others in this valley, I suggest there be pictures taken before and after the fuel reduction is done and it's labeled. As to what was done, place it on the To Be Done website that the Fire Safe Council is going to help create. A wildfire mitigation website so folks can see the action and the potential benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Larry Steingold and then Renee Roth.
Larry Steingold, good evening. With the million dollars, I think that would be great. Just please tell the people who haven't had their roads repaired for, since the last century that they will have less road work.
I, I said, we weren't going to decide that tonight.
Okay, how do, well, as mentioned, right. Fire reduction. How to ensure that fuel reduction within the city limits of Ojai is done professionally by licensed insured contractors and employees and is not politically tainted. City-run contracting only. The City of Ojai Public Works Department must run the entire contracting process. No outsourcing controlled to nonprofits or politically connected groups. All contracts must be issued through a public RFP with transparent bid scoring. The question of why Public Works hasn't been doing this goes back decades or years, probably decades. That has to change and keep it in-house on a continual base basis, just like road and sidewalk maintenance. You can't let it get out of hand because that's what we have now. The work will be limited to only public right-of-way and city-owned property. No private property removal within this contract. If the city creates a plan for fuel reduction on private property, owners will have the responsibility and obligation to pay for it as a reimbursement or some other grant or payment process. No door-to-door political contact during, during work or selling other surfaces. Explicit RFP language. No solicitation, campaigning, political activity, or selling things during contracted work. Crews must stay on public property and perform only on contracted work. Professional utility-grade crews, like the SC Electric Company, use only. Require contractor with bucket trucks, cranes, train line clearance, arborist, like what electric utilities use. No day labor with pickup trucks. Must have full insurance and safety certifications, all current and in force, and professional oversight, meaning paid insurance. Start with the highest-risk areas, the Arbolata, Kuyama, and other major corridors with overgrown roadside trees beside City Hall. Prioritize hazard trees threatening evacuation routes and power lines. This list was created by Ojaians who want transparency in a fuel reduction program that will be continually performed by public work employees or by contract for specific tasks. No politics, no divisiveness, just, it's getting done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold, and then Renee Roth.
Good evening.
Hello.
Renee Roth. I, I enjoyed hearing Mr. Harvey explain about Measure C and I was really delighted to see the budget that shows the actuals for Measure C funding, the categories that were in the ballot measure. I really appreciated seeing that. And I appreciated hearing that there's going to be a Measure C policy going forward. I think that's needed and I think that's important. I was also really happy to see that you're willing to put some money on the table for fire hazard reduction mitigation programs. I think this is what I heard when the Fire Safe Council was giving their presentation. They want to see fire hazard reduction, evacuation. They want to see something and they want to see you doing it, and they want to see you doing it now. And it may have had to be reworked, but I think people want it and they want to see it. And I think it's really important to have that in the budget and on a regular basis. The other thing is I do agree with Mr. Steingold. I, I believe, and I've forwarded things to our Public Works Director, and she's been willingly receiving and not giving me flack for sending her videos of very high fire hazard areas in my neighborhood, especially along Kuyama Road. And I think I sent that to other members of the council. I don't know who got it. I don't know who didn't. I don't remember. But I am very concerned about that corridor on Kuyama Road where the yew trees are in right-of-way areas that are right next to fan palms that are overhanging electrical wires on both sides of the street. So I do think that we need to prioritize the city's public right-of-way areas. And your RFP should focus on the city-owned right-of-way areas that have been neglected for many years. I'll say it, it's been neglected. The pathway that I'm supposed to walk on Kuyama is a, is a nightmare. You can't ride a bike on it. You can't walk on it. You trip and fall on it. It's really dangerous. So I, I do think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with the trees, and I think Public Works, Lyndy Palmer, she does it. She knows how to issue them. She knows how to set the standards and the specifications to get it done right. And I think you need to do that for city-owned property as well back here. Hire the arborist, hire the equipment, hire the professionals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we have two raised hands. First, we have Valerie, followed by user labeled iPhone one-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Valerie, you have the floor. Valerie, I've given you the option to unmute. If you can hear us, please unmute and begin to speak. We'll give you one more opportunity. Okay, Mayor, I think we'll move on from this one. And user iPhone one-twenty-five, you now have the ability to unmute, and you can have your public comment time.
Can, can you hear me now?
Let's clarify. We have Valerie speaking now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good evening, Valerie Freeman, Ojai City resident. Please adopt the full Ojai Fire Safe Council proposal and budget thirty-three percent of Measure C annually for fire mitigation. The July twenty-ninth meeting made it painfully clear some council members arrived perhaps with a predetermined outcome. The seventeen written public comments strongly support the full Ojai Fire Safe Council proposal. These comments included from six local fire experts. The word urge appeared twelve times. They called the proposal imperative, paramount, a natural evolution of the CWPP. They emphasized the need for expert guidance and a strategic approach. Yet this council continues to be playing checkers while the fire crisis demands a chess-level strategy. You're overlooking their value of experience and collaboration, their full proposal created based on your own fire goals and our sub-CWPP is not just a document, it's a tool to identify priority projects, and it's the key to unlocking state and federal funding, and yet you did not fully approve it. One part of their proposal included beacon boxes, simple tools to help emergency responders navigate unfamiliar terrain. And then there's Measure C. Nearly eighteen million to be collected, but less than five hundred thousand spent on fire mitigation and tree work. That's just two-point-five percent. Where's the transparency? Were these tree projects even for fire mitigation or just public works maintenance or capital improvements? If you cut a tree for fire, then that should go under fire mitigation. Otherwise, all other tree maintenance needs to go in a different category for Measure, Measure C. As a former Ojai Arts Commissioner, I've seen how limited city staff are in time and expertise. We've seen errors in contracts and record-keeping. Expecting your current staff to manage complex fire mitigation contracts is unrealistic. You're not fire experts, and that's okay. Please adopt the full Ojai Fire Safe Council proposal and budget thirty-three percent of major Measure C annually for fire mitigation. And make another category in Measure C for tree maintenance or capital improvements. Let's be smart, let's be strategic, and let our experts step to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
That hand has been lowered, Mayor, so we can move on.
Great. We'll move on to discussion, and there's one, just to remind you, there's one request for, if we want to make that request, just the general budget framework of a million dollars is on the table at least. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm, so my orientation is very much towards how we reduce fuel in the most hazardous areas that are most likely to spread fire to throughout the community. The, but, you know, the mechanics of getting to a solution are complicated. It's not because we don't understand or don't have a will. It's like figuring out how do we do this best. And I guess I have already kind of made my comment about the setting of a number. I, I'm not comfortable with the idea of plucking one objective of, of the Measure C money and saying, we're going to put a, we're going to assign a, a number here when we haven't assessed the others and what those numbers are. Now, I do understand, and I guess I maybe I'm, I'm repeating my question, but I do understand that, that maybe that number is more of a placeholder that will be adjusted, you know, down the line, and we're really just saying, hey, not more than a million dollars from Measure C. And, and I'm kind of okay with that because it, the, the core place is, or the, the big decision is, okay, now we're, now we're allocating this money for a specific purpose. The million dollars is not, is not that.
I'm seeing it exactly how you're saying that.
We still, we still get, he, he, Mr. Harvey has said many times that we're talking about granularity. And so the idea is, you know, we get down to the nuts and bolts of, these are the specific things that we're spending money on. So even though conceptually, I am not crazy about putting the, the million dollars on that number when we don't know what numbers apply to the other goals of Measure C. I, I'm okay with doing it with the idea that it's just a very flexible placeholder and it gives us, you know, plenty of ability to make a decision somewhere down the road to allocate money.
I'm in full agreement with that.
Yeah, and I'm in full agreement also, and I think that it might all, I, I liked Ms. Freeman's idea of a percentage because that takes away a, a certain number. And maybe we do that and maybe, you know, paving or capital improvements for this year is forty percent, but next year, because we've done that, it's, you know, so I, I think that that's also a way to go, is to consider a percentage. If a million is twenty-five percent of what our Measure C money is, then twenty-five percent towards fire. then 25% towards fire hardening seems reasonable. So if you take away sort of the, you know, "Oh, my God, it's $1 million." But you say, "This money has to be used for four things, and 25% of it is, you know, is equal." Do we think that all of these goals are equal? Maybe we do. Maybe we don't. So I think that that's also a very valuable approach or a way to think about it. It helps me.
And that's going to... You'll bring that, you'll bring some options back on what a policy of Measure C might be.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm hearing widespread support for that. So that'll probably be sooner than later.
Yeah, super.
Yeah, early fall.
Okay.
Yes. And I was actually seeing it similar to the way Councilmember Whitman was seeing it in that, "Let's have a placeholder. I like the idea of a percentage," and having a Measure C policy. That way, all the street paving and the climate initiatives, everything that we see, you know, as a way of honoring the voters' request in that money, that we are, you know, we're being the best stewards possible of the way that we're spending that. I also think that it's, you know, that there... If we look at the Eaton Fire, we look at the Palisades Fire, you know, one of the biggest issues was the ember casting, was the... The embers were blowing three miles, three miles, and that's what started the fire. And so I think that whatever we can do to prioritize ember screens, ember protection, that would be something that I would like to establish as a top goal. And I would also like to look at ways that we could look, that we could help low-income residents fire harden their homes. You know, we just, in our efforts of fire hardening, we had to remove a palm tree. And, you know, it's expensive. It's cost prohibitive. And there are folks who can't afford that. And so I'm optimistic that in, you know, looking at working with the Fire Safe Council or any other organization, that we could do something to help that because helping one house is going to help all the houses in that area. So those are just a few things that I wanted to add.
I love all those ideas. So I'd like to move that we add a $1 million budget placeholder towards fire mitigation from Measure C.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mr. Montgomery, please.
I have one question. Would you like to include the direction to return with the revised CIP and budget amendment?
Yes.
With that placeholder?
Sounds good.
That's how the placeholder is formalized.
Thank you. Are you okay with that? Okay, great.
Wonderful. Motion understood.
Thank you.
Roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng. Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll take a five-minute break. Check, check. One, two. Hey, everyone. We're going to get started again. We're going to do it, guys.
All right.
Welcome back. We are on item number three, adoption of resolutions establishing budget and annual comprehensive financial report management policy, a financial policy, and a balanced budget policy, and receiving and filing staff responses to city council budget-related requests.
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Billings.
Thank you.
And this is going to be a repeat for two of you who saw this item basically, pretty much verbatim, at the Finance and Budget Committee and some of the... We've got a couple of members out in the audience and then our public. Yeah, right. So anyway, Ms. Billings, you want to take it away?
So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, we are here to follow up on some items that the city council directed us to follow up on. And that, I will... is on page 3-7, which are the friendly amendment to the motion to adopt the proposed budget. There were four requests put before staff, and we are pleased to be able to provide a report. The first item that was brought before us was to provide some information regarding fluctuations between the actual spend in '23-'24 and then the draft budget prepared for '25-'26, or what is now the adopted budget for '25-'26. Staff took time to review and analyze those items, and there were three main drivers that seemed to really impact the differences. One was the classification and compensation study implementation, which was done during that time period and resulted in some increases to reflect the market. The other was inflation and operational cost increase, like rising costs for utilities, software, contract services. And the final one was realignment and centralization of the costs. So some expenses were previously distributed across multiple departments, like insurance premiums and utility costs. And it has now been moved within one line item, making it easier to track the costs and also easier to pay the bills so you're not keying everything to a whole bunch of different accounts. The other item of note is that there were some vacancies during the prior year. And with those vacancies being filled, we now have, you know, the costs that we budget as if all of the positions are filled. For instance, we've budgeted as if the finance director was filled from July forward, but we don't have a person in that position yet. I'm serving temporarily. So that'll be a cost... It'll be reflected as a cost adjustment at the end of the year. So those were the big items. And I think the easiest way to present this is to maybe break it down by the different items as we're going, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Please.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Comment one response.
Okay.
Okay. The next item before us, the next items before us were the directors were to present a plan for getting the annual audit for '24-'25 completed by December 31, 2025. While I don't believe that we'll be able to happen this year, the city had not contracted with an auditor. So we, when you contract with your auditor, you get in line for your turn to be audited. And since we contracted late, we will not have our audit for this year until the middle to the end of November, which will mean that we won't be able to have our audit report. I'm working with the audit firm currently and pushing for having it by the end of January for this year. But the policy before you, one of the policies before you, does state that staff will... Will, that the city will endeavor to have the audit completed by that timeline of December 31. And if it's not going to be completed, staff will be sure and report back to you. The other item is to present in October for city council approval recommendations to the '25-'26 budget. So in order to... And to present a December plan for the orderly review. In order to incorporate those last two measures, that's also a policy that the city is... That staff is recommending be adopted by the council to go over all that. So that policy is presented for you. And I'm apologizing. We've put this into a different order to make it fun. There we go. 3-10. So that's your budget and annual comprehensive financial report management policy. I like the title. And that policy states the timeline that the council, that the city will endeavor to undertake the budget process, outlining for the whole year what that process is, as well as the audit timing. Are there any questions on this policy?
Yeah. Bullet number three.
Microphone, please.
All right. Bullet number three on page 310. I just want to understand that better because it's not sinking in for me.
So what we're saying, what that is saying is that the city... So the city is divided into multiple sources of funding. And an easy way to think of right now is your Measure C. That's all segregated into one funding source within one. It's a special money, and it's in a special funding source. And then there's the other, like the general fund has... That's a wider funding source, and it has a lot of different divisions in it. Sheriff, city clerk, city council, finance. So when the council's approving the budget, it's being approved at the bottom line of the fund level. And then, but in the case of the general fund, by department or program level. Keeping in mind that any expenditures that are... And I hope I'm saying this right, Mr. Harvey will nod. $50,000 or above. fifty thousand or above have to come back to council. Is that the amount?
No, my authority is twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, twenty, I'm sorry. I was giving him, ooh, I'm giving him extra authority tonight, sorry. Twenty-nine, anything, anything that is thirty thousand dollars or less is at the staff level, but anything greater than that is going to come back to council, any contract adopted.
Assuming that we have, the money has been adopted in the budget, and we have funding in the appropriate account. We don't need to spend the money unless we.
So, I, I think I understand why I'm confused, and I wanna make sure that I'm now understand it correctly. So, when you say appropriations are approved at the fund level, it just means that we're, you know, taking our budget sheet, and we're approving that line that's the fund level.
Yes.
And I, yeah. So, I know why I was confused. I don't need to explain it. I understand it now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry for the, for, you know, trying to give him extra authority. It's taken.
Ms. Billings, it, it seemed to me that one, one way of summarizing that the policy is really, you're establishing when reporting is going to come out to us for review. So, I see that as kind of the theme of these, what you're presenting here tonight. So, that's the policy that's being said, is when we're gonna get the reporting, or at least what we're gonna shoot for.
Yes. And this is a policy that is commonplace in, in many cities. And so, this is something that they look for us for all of these policies. And the reason why we're bringing them before you is that there is a national guideline. I know I've mentioned it a couple times. It's called the General, the Governmental Finance Officers Association, and they set a guideline where they say you guys should have all these different things to make your reporting the most transparent to your citizens. And so, we're working within that framework to slowly start bringing these policies back to the city council and to start working within that checklist and framework, so that hopefully the city will be awarded a certification that says, yes, you're meeting that framework. One of the other recommendations that they, that is being brought before you, so it's on page three dash fifteen, it's called the Financial Policy, and there was a lot of discussion on this one at the committee level. Because what this policy is saying that, is that all of the financial policies will come back before you every year as part of the budget process. So, they'll all be in the budget document when it's brought for preliminary review. It'll be, go before the committee level. But staff will rotate through and make sure that each policy is brought before for special review, albeit taken into the attorney's office, whatever needs to be done, looking at other cities and doing some extra check every three years. So, this is just saying, we're gonna bring those policies back to you for, except for the investment policy, which has to be adopted out every year. We'll get, we're going to, you're gonna see them every year, but we're gonna discuss, you know, certain ones every three years, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. And also, you'll have rotating council. That way, everybody's disgusted and is aware of what the policies are. And finally, you have a definition of a balanced budget policy that's on page three dash eighteen. So, that's one of the items that is recommended for inclusion in a, in a budget or in your fiscal policies, and it says, what, how does the city define a balanced budget? And we're saying that it's a balanced budget. This is for the General Fund. We're just talking about the General Fund at this point. That operating revenues must cover operating expenditures. So, those are your ongoing revenues are going to be, are going to cover your ongoing operating expenditures. But in a given year, and I know this is one year we have been discussing this, where we have excess fund balance. The cities, you guys have done an excellent job, amazing job of, of establishing that fund balance. And if you're looking at some one-time expenditures that you're going to cover with that, that that's, still meets the definition of having a balanced budget. This is defining your definition of a balanced budget. It's something that they're looking for to see. Did you disclose that to the public? What is your definition? And that's what we're adopting, that's what staff is recommending that you adopt in this policy.
Yep.
Are there any questions on either of those items? So, staff's open for discussion.
I have no public comments on number three at the moment. Okay. Why don't you just go right up there, Ms. Roth?
I do, I have just a couple of quick questions.
Okay. Oh, hang on one second. Ms. Roth.
My understanding is that this all went through the Budget Committee.
Right.
This did all go before the financial budget.
And was there anybody on the Budget Committee that thought that there was anything shady about what is being proposed?
There, there was, there was nobody that thought there was anything shady about what was proposed, although there was lengthy discussion on several items.
Yeah. And then the, the final, the final question is, no, nobody's getting any authority to do anything that they didn't have before we adopted the policy.
No. This is following the same authority that the city has operated on to the best, as I can tell from what I've seen in the last year or two of reviewing everything. It's just confirming it into a policy.
So, we're, we're continuing to do the things we've done in the past, but we're articulating it in a, in a more formal fashion, how we're doing things.
Yes.
What, what I heard from most of the committee members was that it will put us in a much stronger position over time that we can make. Our judgment can be very sound. We'll know where we stand in a much better way than we can now, which is already pretty good, and we'll just continue down that road.
I would add that Standard Empores and Moody's, they are, they are the authorities that rate cities. Should we ever be in a position where we want a credit rating? And some of the things that they look towards is whether or not we have these policies in place. In my prior organization, we did not have these types of policies in place, and suddenly, we were thrust into a position where we wanted a large grant even, and then we wanted to issue some debt, and we were putting policies out like crazy. So, it's really nice to have these. Also, today, we were asked by, it wasn't Metro, I'm gonna mess up who it was, but anyways, another organization.
DCTC?
It was a federal organization, and I'm gonna mess that up for our single audit, asked us today, did we have a policy in place yet? It was a DOT. And I was able to quickly send them off and assure them that, or, well, I didn't assure them you would vote. Yes, I assured them that it was before the council tonight, and that I would hope to send them a completed policy in the next few weeks. So, they wanted to know that we had this financial management policy, that we put that in place. So, that is being asked for, and it's not always just debt issuance, but it's sometimes grants. They wanna know how you're managing your money, and this is your way of saying, this is what the council's articulated.
Mr. Summers, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the council and the committee. It also ensures the strength of the policies being adopted, creates a tool that's accountable for the city manager and the staff and the council as to the manager. And as we have staff turnover, it's not, oh, what do we do? Well, ask the last person. It's, oh, what do we do? Here's the policy book. Follow the policy. So, you can inculcate a strong culture of excellence and transparency and compliance by adopting policies and then enforcing them.
That's a great point. Anything else before we go to public comments? Ms. Roth, please. Sorry to have you sit down and come back. Thank you.
Good evening. It was an interesting meeting where we've got one, an hour and a half to hit all the bases on the budget, and we haven't been able to do budgets talk for a long time. So, I, I, you got a lot accomplished. Congratulations. One of the things that, that we talked about but didn't really hit a landing with, I, I don't know. Are we gonna have any future Budget Committee meetings? We are. Okay, good. I, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah.
One of the things we talked about is, as the city, because Mr. Harvey has a living budget philosophy, and that it's a living document, and it's changing ever constantly. And like tonight, you approved a million dollars for Measure C. Yay! I'm happy, I'm happy. But I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe you should have a landing page on your website for your budget documents and the changes that you make, because going forward, it's gonna be really hard to keep track of all these little changes that come forth. It used to just be you'd have a mid-year budget document. It laid out everything, and then you were done. But because this is an ongoing, I think you need to have some month, a monthly report that says, here's our revenues, here's our expenditures, here's what we're doing, here's how we're, how we're doing based on what we thought we were gonna be doing, so you know where you're at, instead of, oh, well, let's go spend a million dollars, and we don't really know where we're at. So, I think an, a monthly report is something we need to add to the agenda. The other thing I'd like to see is you define your fixed assets. What are fixed assets? Fixed assets where capital improvement projects are being invested? That's for, for assets that are over a year old. You expect them to last for more than a year. But it should say that when you're doing your CIP and your five-year capital improvement projects. I think you're gonna need some more definitions in there. The other thing is, General Fund Budget Balancing. I was very happy that you were talking about taking your excess revenues and transferring them to the capital improvement projects, because I think that there can be a tendency to underestimate your revenue, have a windfall at the end of the year, and then go, where are we gonna put that money? Oh, boy, let's spend it. But it should actually have a policy that says, our, our road improvements are a priority, and we're gonna fund our road improvements as a capital improvement project for excess revenues. So, I think that's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Mayor, Mr. Creasy, I'll make a comment.
Thank you, City Council. I'm really responding now to Councilman Whitman's question about the slightly tongue-in-cheek, I'm sure, anything shady. Actually, the Budget Committees report out that Ms. Billings is giving you is very good news for the city. The big things that are going to happen going forward are, number one, your audit will be done on time, which will facilitate a very measured, coordinated budget preparation process on the back end of the, of the fiscal year. And the other thing is, the revisit of the current year budget in October is gonna give you the opportunity to layer into that process a much better view of what the actual numbers were for the just expired year, which we don't normally have when you approve the budget in June. So, those two things alone are gonna make this a much better process. Part of the problem that we all deal with is, in the absence of definitive information, we debate about what could be the case, and that's pretty much wasted time. So, what you're gonna see, assuming that they follow through with the commitments, and I'm sure they will, is this is gonna, budgeting is at some point gonna become fairly boring from a nuts-and-bolts point of view, and pretty much a hundred percent on, what are your goals, and where do you wanna spend the money, which is exactly the way the city should run. I look forward to many more budget meetings in the future, and the level of boredom will go to the ceiling, and, and that's exactly the way it should be.
Then mission accomplished. Thank you, sir. And I, just, one thing that did get mentioned is, other cities do have a live through their website looking at a budget where you can look through things, you can query, you can look through data and sort it out. So, that's for the future, but it's something that we can aspire to, and that would be great to see at some, at some point. Any more questions or discussion? Is there anything online? Mayor, we have no raised hands. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just comment. Yes, my comment was tongue-in-cheek, but.
Are you feeling good now?
The big, the big pro, you know, the big, the big issue here for people from the community watching is, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing responsibly? And I guess maybe a better way to have asked, are these best practices, as opposed to, is any of this shady? But I actually kinda came into the meeting thinking I needed more time to figure out what all of this stuff said, and after having sat through a really great explanation, I'm happy and completely confident, and I'd, I'd move that we adopt.
I second. Any more discussion? Mr. Montgomery, please.
Pardon me, Mayor. You caught me in some paperwork.
Not at all. It was Mr. Whitman seconded by me.
I understood, and I'm ready for a roll call if you are. Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to number four. Joint City of Ojai, Ojai Unified School District Workforce Housing Committee, and request for Special Housing Counsel.
Mayor, did you, you talked about possibly moving an item forward. Did you wanna take the other item forward?
I think we're okay. Basically, we wanna, I was having this kind of not necessary, but end time of ten, which I think we will definitely get to.
Okay. Well, then, let's jump into this item. Briefly, this is something, Mayor, that actually, I believe you recommended earlier this year, I think in the January timeframe, the formation of a two-on-two. But it has been discussed, actually, by other members on this body with me independently. So, there's been a lot of interest in, in this creation. I think this came, it came to me as probably something we needed to do sooner than later, when the mayor and I were not too long ago in a meeting with two members of the school board and an administrator or two, talking about workforce housing. And it just became very clear that we really needed to have the Policy Board, City Council, create this group, policy-level group, to interface directly with the school district for the purposes of talking about workforce housing. The staff has talked with the school district multiple times over the past year, and really, the discussions are policy, they're not so much staff level. So, but also clear is that this is, especially when dealing with the school district and their unique situation with property and state law, that you need somebody to provide some guidance legally in this area. In the past, we've used Ms. Sunny Soltani as Housing Counsel. I wanted to bring this forward specifically to this council to give, she has, she has an open contract for just general housing council, and I believe we use her for the Becker Development and other, other items that are out there. But I, I didn't feel comfortable having that contract bleed into other areas without council authority. So, I'm recommending also that we have a separate agreement with her. She's very specialized in this area. This council is familiar with her work, to provide us with guidance in these discussions.
One quick question. I think what arose in the language of the agenda item is that the, the two-and-two committee which precedes this council, that notion that there's two here and two from USD would be basically an ongoing relationship. This seems more pointed. So, I think that's one thing we might define right away is, is this specific to, what would we like to do? Is this specific to the, the workforce housing they're proposing, or is this the general?
So, I've, I've heard that, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry to step on you.
No, God, that's all.
I've heard that from a few of you, actually, and discussed it with the city attorney. I might ask him to jump in here for some advice.
Yeah, so, tonight's agenda item was written specific to the workforce housing.
Great.
Proposal, but the council could, if desired, approve now and bring back next time on consent or discussion to broaden the mandate of the two-plus-two committee, if that was desired. Tonight's item is written.
Twenty-six agenda is recently.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. 'Cause tonight was written, this item is written as workforce housing discussion, but you could bring it back next time to broaden that mandate if desired.
I appreciate that, 'cause I, I would suggest to my colleagues, there's a lot to talk about with, with the school district beyond this project. So, if, if we did wanna say, let's start that relationship, I welcome that.
Or I would take your direction to bring the whole item back, and I could just revamp it as well, if you'd prefer to do that. That's fine with me, whatever you want.
For sure.
I would make that motion. I mean, it was, I think, on February seventh, or maybe it was the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three, when I made the first recommendation for a two-by-two. That was voted down three to two by that current council. So, and in that.
and in that time, we've had many things that we should have been discussing as a two-by-two. Um, so I would um favor uh expanding it, like I thought that was our direction anyway. I didn't realize our direction was a specific uh.
I'll, I'll take credit for that, that I should have caught that, but let, let's bring it back.
Yeah, let's bring it back. I, I would like to bring it back because I think it, it warrants a full-fledged discussion as to what we really want and what we really need and what are the issues we might discuss. And this is, this is one, but it's certainly not the only one, two or three, really.
Let me just give, one caveat is timing, though.
Yeah, and I, so I, I don't have a problem with us bringing back the two-plus-two maybe at the next meeting, but I think we should address and approve getting legal counsel involved to direct where we're going.
But with the housing, with the workforce housing?
But if we don't have a, if we don't have a motion and we don't have an approval, then how can we direct them? I mean, we, we are, until we have that, there's no point in directing council to do anything, correct?
If I might offer, that, it seems to me that where, where OUSD is, and I do attend their board meetings, they are in the midst of their feasibility study of which they're going to receive in the fall. They know that we are having this conversation today and it's, there's sort of two dimensions. One is the number of units and then how is it paid for? One affects the other greatly even in their size and all of that, so we do want to move quickly, but um, I guess I don't, if we were to come back at our next meeting with our two individuals and then engage with the council, I don't see what the council will do prior to that, I guess.
So I, yeah, actually, so I'll just um explain that I've been urging the city manager that we get a handle on. So this, the school district is currently telling us in the community what their legal rights are with respect to developing this project. And I think we need to take, I think we need to have independent advice about what they're allowed to do. And I think we need to have advice if we want to collaborate, which I think is kind of the purpose for this two-plus-two. Is there, is there an opportunity to collaborate? I think we need legal advice about the parameters of being able to collaborate.
Oh, I, I don't disagree at all.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think we disagree. I think that it's just why enter into a con, why, why contact Sunny Sultani right now as opposed to when we actually pass a two-two? That's my only question. Because as soon as we pick up the phone, the payments start, so it seems to me it's the cart before the horse. If we, even if we assume that we're going to move in that direction, it's still the cart before the horse because the two-two committee should also um be thinking about this in a strategic way. So I mean, you know, I, I think it's six, six of one, half dozen of the other, but just on general principle, why hire somebody before you've taken a vote to move forward in a discussion with you know, the two-two? But I know Ben's already, I know that Ben's already in the discussion, um, so, but.
So the, I think the proposal, though, is that we ask Ms. Sultani to describe a scope of work for us and to advise of a budget and
That's fair.
and, and we can refine that further at some, you know, future point. Am I incorrect about that or?
Yes, staff, staff can do either, either approach is fine. We'll, either direction's gonna be fine.
You know, I don't really care. I mean, one way or the other.
It seems fine.
It, it, it's fine. It just seems uh, whatever. I don't care.
So what I'm hearing is that we come back as soon as possible with a more expanded two-and-two?
Mayor, can I just, just to make it safe, ask for a motion with a second?
Oh, yes.
We had a motion.
Do we have a motion? Okay.
We do have some public comments.
We have public comments.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping right in.
No, 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 so was I. Let's do the public comments. I have Larry Steingold and Bill Miley.
Good evening. It's not as cold here tonight. Thank you. I'm on the Ojai Unified School District Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, but I'm speaking here as myself. Uh, two-plus-two is great. The more conversation you have with the school, the better. But the discussion regarding the housing, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Having discussions, I really don't want to be a lender. I don't want to be a bond. I don't want to have ownership unless we have control of 10 units or five units or whatever it is. What are we trying to accomplish? If it's control over permits and other things regarding the property, fine, we have that. You need to have those discussions. But what are we getting? What do we want? I mean, we're not going to own the property. We're not going to be investors, developers. I mean, we're trying to acquire units for our employees, right? Isn't that the purpose? Workforce housing? So we have our employees here. They don't have to come from wherever. They want to live here and raise their families here. So we need, how many units are we trying to get and how much are we willing to pay for them? And how much are we willing to discount for our employees to do it? So why are we having a conversation? What is the goal? I mean, we have to, that's the whole point of it, right? Otherwise, they do it and all we do is permit and reap the benefits and the, everything else. So please find out what we're going for and what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Just to say, the point of getting together is to come up with answers to the questions you are asking. Okay, um, Bill Miley, please, and then Tom Francis.
Establishing a formalized communication structure is a really good idea. Having two city council members appointed by the council to an official workforce housing communication subcommittee is a good idea. And my personal opinion is you should stay focused on that and not all, a bunch of other things now. Then requesting the school district board of trustees to do the same is the next step. However, I would suggest the city council only vote to show intent and not appoint a subcommittee now. But to convey to the school board your intent, the purpose, and the recommendations to have an ongoing dialogue on the subject. Go slow. Show intent, cooperation, invite a response, build together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Tom Francis, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
I wanted to start by saying thank you for your service. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Um, so Assembly Bill 2295 was a big change at the state level as far as land use policy. It basically created a circumstance where if the school district follows a certain set of guidelines, they can make decisions on land use of that property without any input from the city of Ojai. So basically, if they follow the guidelines of the legislation, this is my understanding, which maybe Sunny Sultani will have a different perspective. You guys have no leverage as far as what they can do or not do over there as long as they follow the guidelines of the legislation. It sounds like they're proposing to do. So I feel like the school district skipped a really important step. They're proposing to encumber tens of millions of dollars of debt of one sort or another, whether it's rolling over a bond or borrowing money from a private developer or a nonprofit developer. But it's a huge debt that they're proposing. What they haven't done is gone to the voters in the Ojai Unified School District and asked them if they're interested in incurring that debt as opposed to pursuing another approach or no, or doing nothing. When they go for a bond measure, they have to go to the voters. This is very similar in nature to a bond measure, but it's a little bit different because AB 2295 allowed them to not go to the voters to incur a debt. I think that's a huge, huge mistake. The voters need to opine and they should go to the voters first, and I encourage the city council of Ojai to send that message to them that they need to go to the voters and not do it what's proposed on the table right now, which from my perspective is implied consent. You guys are basically saying, we want to form a committee with you guys to discuss your proposed project when they haven't gone to the voters that actually are responsible for carrying that debt if it goes forward. So I encourage you guys not to start the committee, and there's really one important point that's also not on the table. There is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there is no clear information on what the rents will be. So if it goes to the voters, which I think it should, it should be proposed with the rents. Because it's called affordable housing, workforce housing. There's all these terms thrown around. Most members of the public don't understand that moderate rate rent for a family of four is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,700 a month. And that's still legally defined as affordable housing. I don't think most people understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Anything online?
Mayor, we have one more in-house from Star Child.
Okay. Hi.
Hey. I uh, I'm glad that you're forming this committee. Um, I think it's important to work with Ojai Unified, Unified School District in support of more affordable housing for working families in the valley. Uh, I have one question about retaining Sunny Sultani, well, maybe two. Uh, the first one is I understand her firm is one of the two that you're considering for city attorney. Wouldn't it just make sense to wrap her services in with that firm if you do and choose, indeed choose them? So maybe you should wait till you choose a firm for city attorney before um, uh, making a special contract with Ms. Sultani. The second question I have is would she be advising you on how to work better with the proposed how, homes to be built by Ojai Unified, Unified School District? Or would she be advising you how to thwart or stop or impede more housing development uh by the school district? If the point would be to reduce the amount of home, homes built, I don't think that you should hire her. I think that this city's task should be supporting the school district to build more homes for more working families in the valley. Um, one thing I under, I, I watched a school uh district meeting and I understood they did have a plan to float some bonds to pay for the development. Um, if they do do so, they'd be going, no, it was different. I don't know. I, I saw Kim shake her head, no. I, I just saw one meeting and that's what I thought I heard them say. Um, I, I don't, I'm not an expert on it. The city, the um, one question that they have is how many homes they should build? Whether it should just be for their teachers, just for their staff? I think you should encourage them to build as many homes as possible because not only do their teachers and staff need homes, but so do your city staff. So do the recreation workers, so do the trolley drivers, so do the public works employees. They deserve to be able to live in dignified housing where they work as well. And so you should encourage the school district to build more houses, not just for their own staff, but for city staff as well. And even more for the families of this community who are underhoused um so that they can have more dignified housing as well.
Thank you, Star Child.
Nothing online, Mayor.
Okay. My view is that a lot of the conversation we're having is actually what will come of this committee, you know, about what, how to work with them and the details. Well, I can tell you from attending those meetings that they're looking at all of their options right now. So it's how to fund it, different ways, how many units, what their cost would be based on the number of units. So those are all to be discussed. That's why there's not a lot of answers yet because the firm's looking at the options. So I'm hoping that we are partnered with them looking at options. Yes.
Yeah, so um, I've been working on this issue a long time. And I've been talking to the city manager quite a bit about this, but I think that the fundamental question is, you know, is there a workforce housing project that can be done at the downtown Ojai property? That the community is going to support, that's going to get behind, this is the project we want. And the, that project may or may not come through the city for any input whatsoever. And that's kind of been brought out. So if we don't engage, then we potentially are at the whim of the school district. And I think we owe it to our community to be a participant in, in making the best project possible, one that the vast majority of the community can get behind.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
So the I, I believe there's a potential for a collaboration between the school district and the, and the city that would ensure that the project is the right size for the community to accept and say, yes, the benefits of this project exceed what we're going to have to absorb in, in terms of additional, you know, downtown traffic, I guess is one of the big ones, but um, it's also our ability to provide input on what type of affordability needs to be part of this because I agree a hundred percent with the comment that if this gets plugged into moderate income affordability, it's not going to do much for our community or for our workforce. We need to figure out how, how do we get to a place where um the uh where the workforce can actually, and um, can, they can actually afford to live and it's a big benefit. It's a big draw to eat. And, and then the next part that I'm really interested in is so that education code provision, it priority, it prioritizes school district employees. And then it secondarily prioritizes school district employees from another school district.
Contiguous districts.
Yeah, so Santa Paula or Ventura, and then it finally, you know, gets to government employees. I'd like to see us be at a spot, you know, potentially move away from that legal model to where we're looking at an agreement with the school district that says um you, you, we've, we've each have kind of an allocation of a, a number of units that's going to benefit either the city or the um, school district. And a lot of what I'm just describing right now is why I think we kind of, kind of need to get the attorney involved to, to, to look at these issues on a broad spectrum.
I just want to mimic what you're saying. I, I like what you're saying and, and it reflects what several OUSD board members are literally saying. They want to keep the costs low. They want to work with the city. They need not work with this provision if they have a partner in us, and so to me, it's, it's my opinion is it's definitely a win-win to work with them.
And, and maybe we don't, maybe we can't reach an agreement, but we should at least make the attempt to um, make this a win for the community, a win for the city, a win for the school district. Yeah.
So I think, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I think in order to make it a win for the city, it needs to be voted on. I have, I think it's three bond issues on my text bill now, not willing to do, you know, in their one meeting, they are talking about $50 million to do the project, which is, you know, very pricey. Um, only one of their board members agrees like to take it to a vote. And I just, you know, I've been in touch with school district teachers and staff members and they said, you know, from what they've been told, they haven't been told recently, but back in the days of Tiffany Morse, that $3,500 a month is out of their price range, like, you know, so why don't they focus? And this is coming from staff, like, why don't you focus on, you know, compensating your staff and your teachers and give the children an education? And they're in the, you know, the business of educating, not real estate.
If I just might pause, it seems to me we're talking about internal OUSD policy and surveys and so that would be for them to figure out, like, they've surveyed their people. So I guess I thought, what, it seems to me what's in front of us is to either work with, to make the suggestion to work with them, not what we think they should do.
Well, I'm just saying that I've reached out because I still have, you know, um, relationships with a lot of the staff. You know, my youngest is 25
Sure.
and reached out to say, you know, because I've always been a voice for them.
No, I hear that.
So they, you know.
So I've thought a lot about what you said. And if we got, you know, if in a perfect world, the voters do get to participate, that, but that's, that's again, that's something that uh is a, we're a long way from and it, and it's going to involve a lot of discussion, but I, I would love to. I, I would love to see the voters say, hey, you know, we wanna participate in funding this project.
But they, I've heard them say they're actually bond weary, so, because there is bond, no, I'm saying the board is bond weary. Yeah, please, thanks.
And, and I'm gonna bring up that this particular model does not work for me. It does not work for me at all. Um, I have to sit here and go like this to see anybody?
We almost need a.
We need a horseshoe. Okay, this is crazy. I can't see anybody. And nobody looks this way because the vortex is that way. So I'm annoyed now because we're now on the second five minutes and I've been looking for five minutes. Okay, so that having been said, um, now that I'm annoyed, um, I'm gonna take a deep breath and you can start the clock over again? Thank you.
Sorry for not seeing you early.
It's all right, it's all right.
Sorry.
I think that from what I understand with the trustees, they are very open to working with the city. They do not want to impose anything. And I think reaching back to Tiffany Morris's days is a mistake. Because, and I'm not saying that to you, Kim, but she, she was problematic in so many ways. Um, and, and we have a completely new board of trustees. Um, and, you know, what I do know about them is they're gonna do what's best for the Unified School District. And we have to decide if what's best for Unified School District is also best for Ojai, understanding that we are just one town in the Unified School District. Um, the property is there, but we do need to look at the laws and see, you know, basically if they go down the route of SB three, three, whatever it is, um, you know, there are, there are conditions. They can actually get funding if they go down a certain route in order to do this. It might be their choice to do that. Um, and I think once again, we talked about this, let's look at what is moderate, what is a moderate rate? So if you are a teacher earning seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars for a teacher is the median. That's what, you know, that's the middle. So if you have two teachers, you're making a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So what is thirty-three percent of that? So when we just unilaterally say that this will not be affordable for teachers, you really need to take a look at the numbers and decide if that's true or not. You know, some teachers make way more than that. Um, I think it is fair to ask them whether or not, you know, the city employees, if there's a way for them to allow city employees to boot, you know, to come in between Santa Paula. But if they're relying upon state mandates and state funding, there won't be a way. Unless they ask for a dispensation of some sort, which also is a possibility. So all of that is, is to be discussed. But what I don't wanna do is to go into this thinking that we are adversarial with the Unified School District because we are not. We are so aligned in so many and to assume that they're gonna build something that the community doesn't want. In my experience, the community one hundred, just supports workforce housing for teachers. You say workforce housing for teachers, they say yes. I mean, eh, eh, that's just been my experience. Um, I realize that there are a few people and that there, there are certain people that would say, you know, no building is, can be good building. But, you know, that's not the majority of Ojai citizens in my experience. So I just, I, I want that and I think, yes, we do need to bring in an attorney to, to verify, you know, and, and actually to offer, potentially to offer, you know, the Unified School District, you know, a different perspective based on a different attorney. So we can share what we're actually hearing from our attorney and make that a learning experience for everybody. But it is their property. The state has mandated that school districts get to build on their property, provided they do these certain things. It was just like the Cabrillo project. It's just like the Becker project. The Becker project was voted five oh on the old council because there was no reasonable way to fight it. Um, and we may very well find that out here, but what I don't wanna have is this discord among the community because we're claiming that the Unified School District is doing something that the citizens of Ojai don't want. That would be an incredible divisive and returning negativity that basically led for the last three years. And, and I would just really, really not like to see that. Um, I think we can all go in here for a win-win, follow the laws, understanding what our restrictions are, understanding what we can ask of them and have fair and honest and open discussions with an agreement that we're all trying to win in this game.
I'm with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
I, no intention of adversarialness, more like, um, partnership, absolutely.
I agree. It, it is a partnership and it'd be a win-win partnership.
Yeah.
I would just like to get more information. I know that you said, you know, you go to the school board meetings, I watch them on television. And if, you know, whoever the liaison is or Mr. Harvey, you said that you go and meet with them with, I don't know, who else. Why have I not ever received any of that information? I thought this was like a first time deal, but come to find out that you guys have been meeting and discussing things that I don't know who's privy to what. I don't know anything.
I, I only know it's privy from the meetings that I watch. And, and, you know, conversations that I heard very on when the trustees and I were all running together. And so we would discuss this and where the cross, you know, where the, where the Venn diagram met. And that's all I know.
So, so just to answer the question from Councilman Meng, I think there, there were two or three meetings where, uh, Mr. Seibert and I were asked to join and I think one was purely staff, one was staff and policymakers, and one was staff and policymakers and employee association representatives, uh, teachers and, um, you know, the non-teaching staff. And it was, it was more just, uh, you know, mechanics of land use in Ojai and trying to figure out what, what's possible, what wasn't possible. And these dated back to early twenty-four, but again, they, they were, nothing substantive really, you know, kinda came out of them. And I tried to put into my weekly update to the council, anything that you may have need, needed to know. And I think I made maybe one or two entries that we had this meeting, but nothing was really coming out of it to bring to the council for action.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing anything, but you know, I'm not saying, yeah.
There were also public meetings that OUSD held that several of us attended, so we heard.
I was actually just gonna add that, that, you know, I think in this, all of this conversation, you know, those trustees were elected, we were elected. And they, they solicited a lot of community support or a lot of community input in, in even navigating the direction of what to do with these properties. So, yeah, I, I am, I, I'm, I recall that when we first brought up the idea of a two and two, uh, meeting, uh, that, that actually, one of the reasons why we voted not to do that is because we wanted to have a joint meeting with the entire school board, with the council and the school board, so that we could all get on the same page, and that never happened. So I think this is a more efficient way to go forward with it, the two by two. And, um, and, and, uh, and I know that we have to bring it back to form that, that committee for more than just this project. Is that correct? For, so, yeah. So I, I think expanding it would be a good idea, cause I would love to have more collaborative relationship with them. And, um, and, and really work together, uh, because the school, the school issues are the, the city issues. You know, their lack of enrollment is, is something that we hear about in our meetings and in public comments and, and, you know, it'd be great to, to work together in a, in a collaborative relationship to see how we can support one another. So I am in support of that and I'm also in support of moving forward with, uh, at, at least starting the process of, of soliciting or securing Sunny Sultani for this. Not as an adversarial party, but as, uh, uh, someone who can help us to navigate what, what, what we can do and, uh, and what, and how to move forward with these.
That's like one step away from a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, that we, uh, that we ask staff to engage Sunny Sultani in representing us in any unified school district project in, in, in helping us to underst, what, what, how should I say this? That, that we, uh, that we, that we secure her as a house, special housing council to the city.
And then, and also bringing back the two and two.
And also bringing back the two by two committee.
That's broader than housing.
Yes.
Can I ask for some granularity with that?
So it's my understanding, I, I agree that we don't.
I'm just saying, sorry, what I want is this, this broader than housing, so, I mean, do you want me to define the words that, that, that address that and you're okay with that?
Yes, well, that, that, that specifically we're, we're looking at for this project.
You mean on the two and two committee, not with.
No, on the two and two committee, I, I think what you're looking for is that we would, that committee would also address additional.
Yes, collaborative.
Issues of mutual concern between the school district and the.
It's not subject or topic specific.
Right.
That's what I'm looking for.
I second.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna make a quick comment. I agree a hundred percent with, um, Ms. Lang that when the idea of a two plus two came up, the thought was we really should have a fall meeting of city, city council and school district. It never formulated. You know, as far as my discussions with, um, the city manager, I was, I was seeking information through, uh, what I was hoping was proper channels. I just wasn't feeling like I was getting it. And so I really think the two plus two is gonna facilitate a dialogue. And then I wanna make sure that every, you know, every member of the public understands that this is just a format for a dialogue. There, there's, there's no, uh, kinda decision-making that's gonna happen. A policy created without it coming back to council and with a majority supporting whatever program we're gonna move forward on.
Right.
Well said.
And, and also that, that it doesn't mean that we wholeheartedly agree with anything that the school board does on their own. It, it means that we were making a stand uh, about our desire to come together and work with them in a collaborative way.
Sounds good. Yes.
So I'm just thinking then, I, I understand building a relationship with OUSD and I'm all for it. But then why don't we start building a relationship? I don't want it tied into the workforce housing from the beginning. So that's what you're saying? Okay, so clarification.
All right, good, just, let's just be honest, that's the first subject on the table.
It will be the first subject.
We wouldn't wanna pretend that.
It will be the first, because it's.
I'm just trying to be honest to say.
But it's not, certainly not exclusive.
Exactly. I mean, there could be other topics that come up too, like, like what can we do, you know, what, how, you know, how can we help boost, how can we help your enrollment or, or things like that?
Where does the communication, I know it's different, but like with the pool, how, how was that going with conversation?
That would be a subject as well.
That's part of my interest in.
That's it.
This as well, is I think we do need to talk to them about the community pool.
There's two leading subjects, that's the second. I agree. So we have a motion and a second.
Roll call, Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
No.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes, four to one.
Okay, we're starting. Thank you for bringing that back and we're on our last item, which is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending and restating section nine one, Ojai municipal code establishing efficiency requirements for single-family, wow, homeowners for certain renovations and additions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Ojai. Seibert, hello, Mr. Seibert. Okay.
It's terrible.
We talked about this already at length, at deep length. So we need a, we need a Chevron, a Chevron.
Well, see, the problem is, well, I do like to step back, but then I get complaints about.
We can move these tables over to. We, we can move these tables over to the city council chambers and we can move the, that desk setup here.
I just want it to go well. That's my main goal.
You think it's stuck to the ground?
Let's, we're on, we're on the home stretch here.
Let's get some deja vu going here, yes?
Yep.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lucas Seibert. I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is item number five, which is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending and restating section nine dash one point one thousand and one and adding section nine dash one point seven zero one subset G of the Ojai municipal code to establish efficiency requirements for the single-family homeowners for the major renovations and additions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Ojai. So I'm just gonna give a brief, brief introduction and then I've got, um, oh. You've disappeared. We've got Walker Wells here. I think you're very familiar with him. He came on Tuesday and gave, um, a, a well, well-received and riveting presentation and answered lots of questions that this, as well as the community had in regards to this FlexPath, um, piece. So really what, what I'm going to do is just kind of introduce these individuals. We have Myra Vega with TRC as well as Walker Wal, yeah, it's a tongue twister, Walker Wells, um, with Raimi and Associates. And then, um, as you remember and recall, there was a workshop last week. I unfortunately was not here, but I heard great things about it and I have watched the video. Um, it was almost three hours. It was more than just this. Obviously, you guys also worked on some other things too, which was great. So really what I'm gonna do is turn it over to Walker Wells to go through the PowerPoint. It is a shortened down version and what I would ask for, for this PowerPoint, when he goes through this, is just hold your questions till the end, so he can just go through it slide by slide. All right?
Well, again, thank you. Um, and, uh, great that this item is, uh, coming before you and excited to, well, see what happens. So, uh, I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. We went through it sort of blow by blow before. Um, but Lucas did ask that we do the, the presentation, so we can go to the next slide. Okay, our purpose is to provide background for the first reading and then hopefully the direction is to go forward with the, the second reading, but that's, that's up to, to you all. Next slide, please. Just a reminder that we have been working on this for at least a year, so it was, um, back in April of twenty twenty-four, so it's been almost eighteen months or so. Uh, when, um, city council went and entered into this agreement with the Clean Power Alliance to take this free technical assistance to help you develop this particular ordinance. And then last August, we had a focus group and a workshop with some, uh, community stakeholders and then have had a number of, um, opportunities to present in front of council and to the community, um, including last week's workshop. And then here we are tonight. Next slide. Uh, the FlexPath is designed to be flexible and give people different pathways to comply with the ordinance. Recognizing that, uh, in the existing building stock, there are all different sizes and shapes of buildings and different projects that people are doing and different, um, options for them to invest in, whether it's insulation or windows or roofing, insulation, or if it's on actual, um, appliances or building systems like HVAC equipment or hot water heating. And you can see, uh, that the FlexPath approach is designed to, um, not, there's an echo. So designed to not get into trouble with the federal government, um, who is the, the entity that gets to, um, set standards for certain appliances and equipment. Uh, so we can't sort of run into, um, EPC exemptions and we also have to have a pathway that's cost-effective in the state of California. And so that's been done. And then you can see some other cities down there at the bottom bullet have, um, already gone through similar processes. Next slide. Few benefits, um, you can save energy that may turn into a bill savings, depend on the relative cost of gas and electricity. Well, better insulated homes are more comfortable, um, they have better air quality, um, they are actually safer, um, in terms of combustion and having fewer openings and gaps that, um, heat or fire could get into. Which touches on the fire resistance, which we know is an important, um, issue, um, in the city. Um, and, uh, and then if we're not combusting, um, natural gas, we're not creating, um, oxides of, um, sulfur, which is respiratory irritant and one of the criteria or pollutants. Next slide. Uh, what you see here is the table on the right, uh, that lists all of the measures that are evaluated by the state of California. um, for cost effectiveness. Um, and then not all of the things on the list are cost effective. We'll see another slide in a minute that identifies what a, a cost effective pathway that also um, responds to the federal criteria are. Uh, you also see that the, there's two triggers, a three hundred square foot or greater um, project would need to get a score of eight. If it's a thousand square feet or greater, it would need to get a target score of nineteen. You can see the points there on the far right and then each point is equivalent to one million British thermal units saved. Um, and that's determined by the State Energy Commission. Um, and that's what we, we base the point value off of and also the cost effectiveness is analysis done by the CEC. Next slide. This just shows a cost effective pathway that does not um, force people into electrification. And so you can see duct sealing three points, attic insulation eight. You would get your five, three plus five is eight. You would have your target score of eight. Or you could do um, attic insulation and wall insulation and you would also get your eight points. Or if you want to, um, if it fits in with your project and how you're investing, you could just choose to do solar. And then there's the electric pre-wire, which gets you seventeen points well below, well above the eight points that you need. And then there are a number of mandatory measures for the projects that are captured by this particular ordinance related to pre-wiring of getting ready for future electric appliances or systems. Nobody's required to buy those appliances or systems, but they are required to put in the electric infrastructure when the walls are open um, to accommodate it at a later date. Next slide. This one's just going to show for a larger, a thousand square foot project, different ways to get to nineteen points. Um, and again, those four yellow boxes up there closer to the top are all um, strategies that are determined to be cost effective by the state. And if you do the math, it adds up to nineteen. Or you could do solar plus one of those things and you would be over the nineteen point threshold. Next slide. All right, um, we, we did some evaluation of your building permits over the past several years and landed at this three hundred square foot number of being sort of big enough to bother with. Um, projects smaller than that, it would seem like an unnecessary burden to, to place on them. But what, three hundred square feet, we start to see appliance replacements and investments and things like windows and insulation. And then just more happens with a larger project for a thousand square foot project. Um, and so more opportunity to, to make improvements. Um, the analysis shows that you would um, see about ten projects a year that would be impacted by the, by the ordinance. Next slide. A few exceptions that are proposed, just to, you know, be considerate, compassionate to people doing these projects. So if you're doing a repair, um, uh, if you've already, well, I'll just go through these one at a time. So repair is exempt. Um, you're just fixing stuff. There's a cost burden exemption. So if it turns out that the cost of complying would be more than twenty percent of the total cost of your project, you could be exempt. You would get credit for things you've already done. So if you, you know, buy a heat pump hot water heater today, the ordinance doesn't go into effect until January thirty first. You'll get credit for having made that investment. We know historic buildings often need special consideration, particularly around windows. And then we also want to encourage people to do things to sort of mitigate their exposure to hazards. So that would be things like seismic retrofits, fire hardening. Those would be exempt. Excellent. It's a few more exemptions. Uh, temporary structures like a tent wouldn't have to um, fit in there. I think we talked about how the, potentially the tiny houses that are on non-permanent foundations would be exempt. Um, if you're only doing roof or window upgrades, uh, manufactured homes, mobile homes, that may be where the tiny houses would probably best fit. Um, properties in climate zone sixteen, which is a very tiny portion of your city where there is one house. Um, so that's exempt just out of um, sort of administrative efficiency. Uh, ADUs are exempt. Um, other instances uh, where um, the EPC covered appliance um, is prohibited. Um, and then homes built after um, December thirty first nineteen ninety-one. So more recent developments wouldn't be impacted. We just have a couple of examples. This is a four hundred and forty square foot uh, alteration. Um, the target score would be eight because it's between three hundred square feet and a thousand square feet. And you can see the two compliance pathways. They could just jump to pathway two. I'm sorry, they could just jump to pathway one and do a heat pump hot water heater and get their twelve points and be done with it. Or they could choose, say, duct sealing and attic insulation, like I showed on the chart with the yellow on it. Um, eight points. Neither of these gets it all close to the twenty um, percent cost increase. This also shows the sort of flexibility in the pathways. Next slide. And this is a bigger project, a thousand square foot, um, really re- remodel. Target score of nineteen. And then you could see here on the first compliance path, could do a heat pump hot water heater and a heat pump space heater, um, which would get you um, over the nineteen point threshold. Or you could make a series of upgrades, new ducts, new windows, attic insulation, wall insulation to the overall property. Um, that adds up to nineteen. You see the cost, but also the percentage cost increase both, again, well below the twenty percent threshold. Next slide. There are incentives and rebates and sources of financing available. They don't cover the whole cost. They can mitigate the costs. Not everybody is going to qualify. Some are income qualified, some are, um, well, there have been tax credits. Those are going to go away at the end of the year. You have to be paying enough taxes to avail yourself of the tax credits. Um, but there are resources out there, um, largely from the state of California. And then the financing, these are a couple of entities that will help with the the financing um, for people who don't have the cash upfront. Next slide. Then there are implementation resources that go along with this. So um, I don't know if you'll see me again, but you'll see my colleagues at TRC again to help get the ordinance up and running, assuming you decide to go forward with it. Um, and that's part of the um, the services that they're offering. I, I didn't mention this, but all of this is coming through Clean Power Alliance and your relationship with your electricity provider. And the reason all of these pieces fit together is they do provide one hundred percent renewable electricity, which from a climate standpoint is the sort of logical basis of switching to electricity from gas. You know, gas can't get any cleaner. It's just gas, but the electricity has become cleaner and cleaner and cleaner. And to the point with the community choice aggregation option that you can get access to hundred percent renewable, hence the shift towards electricity. And this does tie into these bigger sort of climate issues that you were talking about earlier this evening. Okay, next slide. Which is the last slide. Okay, thank you.
We, you, you did such a good job before. There was nothing new here.
I know.
So thank you for that.
I do have one question.
Sure.
This, um, so you went through the exemptions and the cost burden exemption. I wasn't, uh, I had understood that if you um, if you spend twenty percent, then you're done. But it sounded like you said, if it's getting, it costs more than twenty percent, you're exempt.
Right.
So if you, if your repairs would, I mean, don't you have to select items to get up to that twenty percent before, okay. So it's not that you're, you're completely exempted. It's just that you don't have to go any further than a twenty percent.
You're exempt from getting to the number.
Yes, okay.
You, I'm sorry, you're exempt?
You're exempt from having to reach your number eight or, or because if it exceeds more than twenty percent, you don't have to hit your target number. But you would spend up to twenty percent of the, of the cost.
Yeah, Myra.
So it's a little bit confusing in the, in the, um, I had the same confusion because on page five five, number two, it says projects with a hardship, meaning either that, A, compliance costs are more than twenty percent of the total valuation. So then you could be exempt if the project costs were more than twenty percent. Um, and in these cases, you could request a hardship exemption. So then you have to actually ask for a hardship exemption and, but it, it doesn't say that you will be granted that hardship exemption. So it says that you can request it. So just in the ordinance, I have a little bit of confusion with the language and also the whole thing of compliance costs are more than twenty percent of the total valuation. Then you can ask for a hardship. So if you hit twenty percent, then you have to come ask for a hardship or is, is that what this, this is saying in number two? I, I just, I couldn't quite figure it out. That's what it's saying.
Yeah, I think say you had to do windows, walls.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I, I understand what you're saying, I guess, is that you can get to twenty percent. But that's not really what number two says.
If I could direct the council's attention to focus on the language in the ordinance itself, page five dash fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
If the claimed exemption is the hardship, the twenty percent or more cost threshold, then you must apply. It's not automatic. Goes to the building official and the building official in consultation with the director of community development can determine either to fully exempt or to, must determine the minimum feasible threshold of compliance reasonably achievable for the project. Then the applicant is required to comply with that, to that, to achieve the threshold of compliance determined to be achievable. I think as the staff report summarizes it to be, if you can achieve twenty percent, you achieve twenty percent and stop spending there. It's also possible for the applicant through the exemption process to demonstrate hardship that would be zero. And then that would have to be approved by the building official, all appealable up to the building appeals board.
Okay, and are there any costs with that in, in appealing? Just curious. I mean, is there going to be?
Present it be our standard appeal fee unless the council wanted to exempt that. Which is, I think, five hundred dollars right now is our current appeal fee. Or is it three hundred?
It's, it's three hundred.
Three hundred, yes.
Uh, I mean, we might, if someone's claiming hardship and we're, we're saying that, you know, basically by right, you, you don't go over twenty percent, except for you need permission not to go over twenty percent. It's not really by right. I mean, but we're, we're claiming that it's by right in all of our discussions. So if it is by right, it is by right.
I did hear Mr. Wells say, because I brought up the example that by trying to meet um, the, the requirements here, let's say they get to seven or something like that. And then to, to get that next number was going to put them over that twenty percent of the cost that the discretion would then go to the community development director to say, and that leniency would be there. So it's built into that project. So I hope, I'm assuming you would be flexible and in the best interest.
Look, I mean, these are going to be on case by case scenarios, right? It's not just me. It's also the building official looking at it as well. So we're collaborating.
I understand.
Right. So, so I would, I would think that we should take away the permit fees um, in order to appeal or to ask for, to ask for the, what is by right, which seems we have been offering as a by right kind of thing. I think that, oh, yeah, you can appeal it, but you basically have to write us a check to appeal it. That to me just sounds, because, you know, honestly, you know, mandates for spending are never popular, even on laudable goals. And then to add like insult to injury, you get to appeal for three hundred dollars. I can just see that, like, just causing someone to have steam come out of their ears, you know, and it, it seems like if we, we have been going on to the impression that this is a by right. So I, I think, I would make them, I would suggest that we waive the permit or the, the fee for consideration, right? It seems to me that that's what we should be doing. Yes.
If I could suggest how to achieve that goal, it would be that the initial hardship determination has no fee beyond the standard building permit fee. I wouldn't suggest waiving that.
No, I'm suggesting the appeal fee, not, not the permit fee.
Waive the appeal fee.
Yeah, no, waiving the appeal fee, yeah, not, not the permit.
And could you, could you also do it as a um, building official discretion as to whether the appeal fee should be waived? Because I think we have the potential for a lot of appeals that might not, you know, might be kind of frivolous, but if they're in the right spirit of the ordinance, and I think that may, does that, does that make sense?
We have ten assumed. How many do we think are gonna, I, I don't know, there's, this project's number is ten. Like, we assume it's going to be ten. Um, and, and is a building inspector really um, equipped to say that we will, uh, we will waive the fee? That to me is not, I mean, are, we contract out our building inspector. So I'm not sure that I want to contract that decision out. I think I'm much more comfortable with staff making that decision unless the building inspector is the correct person. I don't know.
If I could offer a suggestion as well, you'll, we will spend more in revenue fighting over whether an appeal is or is not frivolous than we would forego in waiving the entire appeal fees. I think, because that's three thousand, if it's ten projects a year, one lawsuit over whether it was or was not frivolous, if people get angry and find a backer is much more expensive than that. I think just have an on off switch. Not a, in nebulous.
He's pretty minor and I'm totally cool with it.
And you can say, you know, you lost your appeal.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's the end of the game.
And then there's always a court after that.
Right. I mean, if you wanted to, or the building appeals board, as I understand it, is the, the, uh, is the property.
I was going to bring up, if we could switch, um, just, I spoke with you before and, and I just want you to repeat for the council if you wouldn't mind. Um, with this slow rollout going to January thirty first, you feel confident that you can work with your contractors to make this happen?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're giving that slow rollout. We've done that in similar ordinances and we found success in that. And what happens is, is the individuals first come into the counter and they're frustrated, right? Hey, guess what? We get to educate you. You get to learn about this. And then by January thirty first, it becomes hard and fast at that point. There's a little bit of a, oh, pump the brakes philosophy. Um, and that, that helps with counter staff as well as conversations that I'll probably have with individual contractors as well. Just to get them up to speed with what we're looking at. So I think that's, I think it's inappropriate and we've done that in the past and found success in that, so.
Thanks.
I have a other, um, I, I must have misunderstood, but I thought additions did not count. I thought it was only for remodels. Did I misunderstand that?
I think it's projects that are either a remodel or an addition of three hundred or a thousand.
Okay.
Correct.
Because I thought we had talked about your sisters.
Why, I, actually, I contacted Santa Cruz because I was wrong. She went the ADU route, so it was exempt. So I was completely wrong. So I talked, I emailed with the director there and I'm waiting to hear back, but um, no, it's not. So I was not correct in what my sister did.
Okay, so it's additions and alterations. It's not just remodels, additions and remodels.
Of the two.
Or a combination of the two. And so I know we've talked about this probably every time you guys have come. But so I'm going to do an addition and or a remodel to make a J, a, a junior ADU exempt.
If it's an ADU.
If it's an ADU, even if it's an attached ADU. I mean, I, I'm.
This is all ADUs.
Okay, all right. So all ADUs even and attached. So I can do, I can remodel, I can, I can add as long as it's going to be a junior ADU. And how does that come into play? Do I need to have, I mean, chicken or egg here? Do I have to come in and say, I'm doing a junior ADU, therefore I am not, uh, I'm not required to do this? Is that, is that what you would do? And you would get permits for your J, your junior ADU? And then that would, that would exempt you from actually having to move forward with the FlexPath?
Correct. If you're, if you're showing on, on the plans that it's either an addition and the junior ADU can be up to five hundred square feet or internal um, renovations that you end up doing to, or a combination of the two, that fits into the junior ADU category. The same thing is true with converting, for instance, a garage. That'd be renovation. Still an ADU or junior ADU and that in itself qualifies as an exemption.
Great. And, and I also wanted to point out that um, alterations that consist solely of roof and or window projects are exempt. So we talked about that, so.
You did say that.
Yeah, so I thought that that was, that was worth, um, and the final point was the one that the mayor said. You believe that three months rollout um, is, is uh, is enough and that it's especially good because it gives everybody an opportunity to learn. You learn, your staff learns how to speak about it and the recipients learn how to understand it, correct?
The nice thing, knowing that we've, we've been, and I've already started having internal conversations with staff, they're already becoming more familiar with it. I mean, as we've been going along, I've become much more familiar with it. I was a little bit hesitant and a little bit fearful of what, what this whole thing meant. But it's the repetition of going through it, understanding the point system and what applies, what doesn't. And seeing those examples out there that we've already done, which ones would apply, which ones wouldn't. It's about ten. It's like the same conversation we had a few years ago regarding um, FlexPath, or not FlexPath, sorry.
Not Reach Code.
Reach Code, where it was like, hey, it's only the new homes and it's like one or two a year, basically. And that's, that's a true statement. One or two a year, not necessarily saying that one or two um, homes at that time were even getting built. It was just permits, not necessarily saying that they were getting built.
Well, I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah. We do need a public, we have, I have one. No, thank you, and I'm ready to hear you. Uh, Larry Steingold, please. No, it's great. It's great. Mr. Steingold.
Oh, Larry Steingold. Um, thank you, Mr.
Larry Steingold, um, thank you, Mr. Summers, for saying it's, uh, we don't wanna spend because you're considering it's our money. I appreciate that. Um, this really is performative, as the word was used last week. It can imply a lack of sincerity and is often used in a negative or disproving way, suggesting that actions are taken to seem virtuous, concerned or engaged rather than actually being so. This is not energy justice. Okay, I mean, this does not apply to everybody. This applies to 30 homes, 30 properties a year. We've got 2,300 single-family homes, we have another 800 apartment units or something. This is gonna take 100 years. Now, I realize you're trying to thread a needle and get it on the books so you can do more things next year and the year, I, I get all that. But why not just do it and put it on the books and make say, okay, upon sale and upon rent renewal, everybody gets energy justice? I mean, this isn't fair. This isn't fair to the people who have inefficient homes, inefficient utilities, and walls without insulation, apartments that don't have double-pane windows, they have nothing. I mean, even Mr. Whitman agreed to me last week, at least mandate energy amber screens. I know it's not fire, but it's climate, it's the whole bit. I mean, we're talking duct insulation, we're talking taping ductwork, simple things, make it four points for apartments, make it whatever, but something, these people get nothing. You're talking about electric bills, gas bills, all this stuff going up on tenants. And tenants don't apply because they get, they don't get a free ride, they just get to suffer. So it's not energy justice. I mean, just step up and say, hey, this is all done upon sale, and if you're a rental in an apartment, all the landlord has to do is do three things, something, anything. But they have to participate. And if they really wanna upgrade the apartments, let them pass through the rents and amortize it over a thousand, 10 years or whatever it is, and just move forward. And get rid of fees for doing these things. Get rid of fees for high, fire hardening. Get, get rid of these things. You wanna give incentives, I know the city has money for this and that, but they don't have enough money for all this. So the best you can do is give something. Don't charge 100 bucks to do some permit. I mean, I know what I spent and they were, uh, nice enough to waive the second fee for the second treat within the first two months of insurance canceling. But again, energy justice for everybody. I mean, that's what it's all about, right? We're a community, everybody, it's not like the landlord, the owners of the property have to upgrade, the tenants don't. And I know it's being reiterated. And, um, that's all. So that's my point, is just, you know, include everybody, just put it on the.
Thank you.
Mayor Starchild submitted a card.
Okay.
I'm not Mayor Starchild Weston.
Hi.
Hey, there's a housing shortage in Ojai and I must oppose this ordinance. Staff estimates it could raise the price of renovations 3% to 5%. Working families in Ojai are unhoused, are underhoused. They need more space for growing families. 5% is a lot for them to pay. The greenhouse gas reductions from this proposed ordinance are small, only 10 houses a year. We can do a lot better in Ojai. We can have a greener city without a colder heart. We can use incentives, we can use education. I, for one, make a lot of changes to my apartment for climate change mitigation. I electrified my, uh, kitchen, um, I walked to city council, I eat a vegetarian diet. Some of those things are what I do. What you do is something different and I think it's up to your liberty to choose what you wanna do to help out the climate. How is this ordinance supposed to reduce global greenhouse gas emissions? Will one mandate that we passed today make a difference? It certainly won't for any cities in California. They're gonna be barred from making those changes for the next five years. Maybe you think it'll make a difference for cities in China. The only difference it'll make for them is that they'll be producing more appliances to go towards the greenhouse gas reductions we're aiming to achieve. Those are, the materials to make those appliances cost greenhouse gases, the transportation of those appliances do as well. It might take five years before we break even, um, from, say, a heat pump water heater. We shouldn't turn away from the dream that working families can have adequate homes to embrace a delusion that a small local mandate can be replicated and broad enough to change the global climate. We shouldn't push down upon the brow of hard-working homeowners, the thorny crown of regulation. We must not crucify the underhoused in this city on a cross of green.
Thank you, Starchild.
No raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, um, we can certainly speak more, I heard a motion coming from Ms. Ruhl.
Yeah. I found Starchild to be extremely persuasive, so I'm gonna pull my motion.
Okay.
I haven't decided how I'm gonna vote, but I'm gonna make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion to, uh, introduce the ordinance amending and restating section nine dash one and, um, and, yeah, that's my motion.
Would you include the removal of the?
Yes, I will recruit, yes, I will include the removal of the.
Appeal fee.
Appeal fee, thank you.
And the language for where that would go is on page 514 at the bottom, under subsection four, appeal. Any aggrieved applicant or person may appeal at no fee the determination of the chief building official and the rest as is.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Did you get that I seconded?
Great.
Any more discussion?
Just one thing, I agree with Larry that we do need to do more.
Yeah.
And, uh, and that's for another meeting.
That's, I agree with that too. Okay.
Roll call. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruhl.
I am voting yes on performative.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We made it by 10 o'clock. But, um, any council member reports? Councilmember reports? There's so much to say, that's.
I know.
Any future agenda items that you wanna add?
We talked about some. It's 10 o'clock.
We could always come back, we're meeting a lot.
Yeah, I, I have a bunch of fire hardening ones, but I, I won't say them now because it's late.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll put them in writing.
Okay.
That sounds good, thank you.
Yes, then we will adjourn. Thank you, guys.